Okay, so if we are ready to begin, I will commence. Is this any better? Are you hearing me clear? Should I continue? Okay, I switched my microphone. Okay. "In accordance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, be advised that notice of this meeting was made by posting on the bulletin board in Town Hall and mailing to the officially designated newspapers a list of the meeting dates annually, indicating that this meeting would take place on Wednesday, October 7, 2020, at 7:30 p.m. Due to the COVID-19 virus and mandatory quarantines imposed under executive orders by Governor Philip D. Murphy, Milburn Town Hall is closed to large public gatherings. A supplemental notice was given in addition to the annual notice due to the transformation of this meeting into a remote virtual meeting. The supplemental notice contained information necessary for members of the public to attend meetings through the Zoom platform, both by audio and video means. The public will have the same opportunity to participate at the appropriate time virtually, just as if they were attending an in-person meeting. The supplemental notice was posted on Milburn Township website, Milburn Town Hall Bulletin Board, and Milburn Town Hall front door. Supplemental notice was also forwarded to the official newspapers, submitted to the township clerk, and published in the item on October 1, 2020." Roll call.
Daniel Baer. Diane Eglo.
Here.
Mary Mastropetrovich.
Here.
Mark Matzle.
Here.
Tara Krupus.
Here.
Joseph Steinberg.
Here.
David Morrow.
Here.
Inuk Tana.
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Miriam Salerno.
Here.
Chairwoman Beth Sol.
Here. Thank you. I do not believe we have any minutes for approval for this evening.
That's correct.
But we do have memorialization for Application 20008 for discussion. This is in regards to the preliminary and final major site plan approval for Quaka LLC. And I will turn to counsel because I know you had shared a message with us. I don't know if you intended to step through and discuss. Okay, so I can hand it to you.
Can everyone hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay. There were a few changes that the applicant had requested be made in the resolution. I agreed with two of them and left, I think, three of them to the board's discretion. I'll just go through them. If you have the resolution, in line 34, there was a request for modification of what we have as standardized language related to the notice that's been given, which has been modified, consistent with the virtual nature of the proceedings. We've used that same language in all resolutions. While their change is somewhat innocuous, I don't see any reason to modify the standardized language that we use in our resolutions. So I would not recommend that the board endorse that change. In line 77, there was a clarification regarding who was operating these various urgent care facilities. I referenced the witness, Mr. Harvey, and they wanted to change that to the organization that operates several urgent care facilities. I think that that is an accurate depiction of what the facts were. So I would recommend that that change be made. Similarly, in line 90, they requested a change to not make reference effectively to the individual. In our resolution, we talked about the operation of his current urgent care facility. Instead, they wanted to just read the operation of current AFC urgent care facilities, which again, I think is accurate based upon the facts. The final two are, well, the next one is the one that I think I really need the input of the board on. It's in lines 202 and 203 of the resolution and deals with that landscape strip in the back of the parking lot that sort of serves as a buffer between this property and the adjacent residential property. My sentence read, "The applicant will undertake measures necessary for the upkeep of the same," meaning the landscape area behind the parking lot, "including but not limited to the trimming and removal of trees and the planting of new shrubbery." The applicant's attorney sought to delete that last phrase and the planting of new shrubbery. My recollection of the hearing was that it was discussed. Martha's report, our engineer's report, does make reference to the unsightliness of that landscape strip, and she does refer to the trimming and removal of trees. But I didn't think that that was the limitation that she placed on it. And candidly, I thought that, you will recall that we had some testimony of the adjacent neighbor who was directly affected by this project, complaining about debris and so forth. And it was my recollection that the board had wanted that supplemented, that is plantings of some shrubbery back there. But when I went back in my notes, I didn't see that. So I'll leave it to the board in terms of how they want to deal with it. There's nothing wrong if the board wants to include that now, whether it was discussed or not discussed at the time, because in the end, it is this resolution that becomes the board's official actions. So you should view this question not only based upon what was discussed, but based upon now that it's before you, how you want to deal with it. Let me stop at that one because that one, I need some board input as opposed to getting to the last one.
Okay, great. I personally, I don't, I remember the discussion. I remember the neighbor's testimony. I don't, I don't have notes or a specific recollection on the request or requirement to plant new shrubbery, but I open it to the board if anybody has different recollection.
Beth, I don't remember discussing shrubbery. I just remember him asking the applicant to build him a new wall.
That is correct.
Correct.
You know.
But he also acknowledged that the wall existing is on his property.
On the, on the neighbor's property?
Correct.
And it's, and the applicant said the wall has been like that forever before he was there. So we didn't even take that on as a consideration.
Right, it's, it's the neighbor's wall and the neighbor has the ability and the right to rebuild that wall himself, should, should that be his desire. I, I don't think our decision as a board was to require this applicant to build him a new wall.
And then would that go to say if that, if that neighbor would also like to plant more shrubbery and taller trees, that would be up to him as well?
That, on his own property, yes. I think this is referencing in this strip, this existing strip. I think that's what they're clarifying. So the applicant would trim the trees or, you know, and remove whatever is debris on their own property. And then I guess the question is, do we want them to replace it? Or do they just maintain that strip as, as a cleaner strip?
What's normal, like, has this come up in the past? I don't know. Like, do we usually ask them to do that? Or would you just ask them to maintain it?
Well, I think, I think in general, you know, we have looked at buffering, buffer areas and had applicants supplement the buffer area if we felt that it was insufficient. Those are all discretionary activities that the board can undertake. In this case, it is my recollection that there is a fence back there as well. So unless the shrubbery is significant in terms of height and mass, it certainly is not going to be seen by the, by the resident. It would perhaps enhance the parking lot area for the applicant. But remember, those cars park head-on into effectively facing that buffer area. And our resolution did require that they have their employees park in those spaces. So it's likely that all spaces will be blocked or the buffer area will be blocked by vehicles anyway.
Right.
I'm not sure how much you're going to see of shrubbery back there at the end of the day, except when no one's there. And when no one's there, no one's going to see it.
Tara, I don't know if you're raising your hand or you're just... You're muted. Oh, you're good. Okay, okay. Okay, so I'm, I'm comfortable. I don't know if I have to make a motion, but I'm comfortable leaving that, making the edit as requested. That's striking, the requirement to plant new shrubbery. How do we proceed?
It seems to me
Go ahead.
that if we're requiring the replacement of some of that shrubbery, that in the event of replacement, or, well, what is the word, what are the words?
The words are, "including but not limited to trimming and removal of trees." That is a recommendation that the, that our engineer made. So that is included in here. And then I just added after those words, "and the planting of new shrubbery."
I think that if trees are taken down, they should be replaced.
Okay, so perhaps we change the wording and I, and I guess I don't know if this needs to then go back for, for their review before they ask us to approve. But I think we could say trimming, you know, and in cases of removal and replacement in instances of removal. Is there a way to maybe say that more eloquently? But...
We can do it that way. That's, that's sort of a compromise where we're not requiring new plantings, except to replace that, which
They remove, yeah. Thank you, Joe. I appreciate that.
There was one other issue, Ed?
Yes, but before we go, is everyone on board with, with that change in that fashion? And I'll just, I'll just craft the language. I see everybody sort of nodding. All right, so the last one is in line 305, and it dealt with the, the ground sign. You recall, there is a ground sign there, a pole, and the condition, it's condition number six. As I crafted it, said, "applicant's installation of any ground signage on the property is subject to the township engineer's approval of the applicant's final ingress and egress traffic pattern plan." They wanted to change that to, to read the location of the ground sign installed by the applicant, sign it, I'm sorry, ground signage installed by the applicant on the property is subject to the township engineer's approval of the applicant's final ingress and egress. So my language was broader. It said applicant's installation of any ground signage on the property. Theirs was limited to just the location of that ground signage is subject to the engineer's approval of the, of the plan. So again, it's, you know, from, from my perspective, I didn't have any problem with my language. I didn't have any problem with their language. And I don't know, maybe Martha can weigh in in terms, or others can weigh in in terms of how the approval of the final ingress and egress traffic pattern will impact on the installation or the location of the ground sign.
Their language seems to imply a rule of the sign itself. I don't think that's the intent. I would stick with what you had there, Ed.
Martha, can we ask if you feel that the way you read it now reflects what you, as the engineer, approved?
My main concern with the sign, and I don't, I don't do the sign approvals. It's a zoning, it would have to meet the zoning requirements. But my main concern would be site triangle, you know, blocking, blocking the view of traffic if that was in the wrong location. So my approval would be more or less having to do with the location and the size of the sign, not the sign itself, so.
So you are comfortable with the phrasing of location. The sign itself is, is always to the zoning, as you just started. So we're not calling that out specifically, but that is, that is an underlying truth. Is that like, that's true without us having to restate it, correct?
Yes, I think that that's right.
Okay, so, so you would be comfortable with it saying the location because that is what you're most interested in?
Right, exactly.
Then Shawna, given that, would you, would you be comfortable deferring to the engineer on that?
Yeah, I am. It just seems to imply that we are approving the sign itself, which we're not supposed to do. Or maybe we just locate any approved ground signage installed by applicant.
Well, the sign needed a variance, so we did approve the sign.
Right. Okay, then it's fine. If we did approve the sign, it's fine. I'm okay with that. Thank you.
Okay, so, so if the board is comfortable with the changes that they recommended and which I concurred, the one that I did not concur in, which is our standard language, and these last two with the modification being replacing any trees removed as opposed to just installation of shrubbery and accepting their change with regard to this ground sign. If everyone's on board with that, will someone make a motion to approve the resolution as modified by the discussion tonight?
Just to add for the record, Jorge and Mark cannot vote on this.
I don't think I can vote on it either.
Correct, you were not here. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Or Tara.
I will make a motion, that motion.
I'll second.
Diane Eglo?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
David Morrow?
Yes.
Yes.
Miriam Salerno?
Yes.
Beth Sol?
Yes. Okay, thank you. So before we move in to our next item of business, which, sorry, I put my agenda down, apologies. I wanted to just explain or state that we have two applications tonight. We previously had an ordinance 2563-20 on an agenda. And for those who are in attendee mode or attending from the public, we are not discussing, this was also known as the Park Road, Park Circle ordinance. It has, per the Township Committee meeting last night, it is no longer currently on the agenda. So they are not seeking planning board opinion or consistent declaration of consistency. So if anybody was here for that item, just want to make sure you are aware that that is not being discussed tonight. That said, we have two applications this evening. We're beginning with Application 20009, MSS Millburn Realty. And this is for site plan approval. I believe it's preliminary and final site plan approval.
John Wycheskala and... So John, if you could just tell me who do I need to bring over?
Yes, will do. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. The, the folks that should be permitted or admitted into the meeting, Jim DeBarbury. He's a project architect.
Got it.
Tina Koch.
Got it.
With MSS. Andrew LaFredo, he's also with MSS. L-O-F-R-E-D-O. And Tanya Gavrilides, that's G-A-V-R-I-E-L-I-D-E-S. She's with Trinity Rehab.
I got them all.
All right.
Wait, where did she go? There she is.
And can you, sorry, John, can you explain how to pronounce your last name?
I will. Just for the record, everyone, John Wycheskala, spelled W-Y-C-I-S-K-A-L-A, for the court reporter on the phone who I know has heard this name before.
Thank you.
Pleasure to be here tonight.
Thank you. So Mr. Wycheskala, I just wanted to just mention for everybody's benefit just the format, and then I'll ask you to begin, if that's okay. We may have some members of the public who have or have not attended a Zoom planning board meeting in the past. So as you just saw, what happened was, we have the ability and our secretary can pull members of the public in at the appropriate times, just as we pulled in the people who will be testifying tonight. The way the application will be heard is that Mr. Wycheskala will sort of emcee the event and walk us through the process this evening. After each witness is called to testify, we will then open it to the board to ask questions of this witness. And then following the board asking question and answer, we will turn to the public to ask any questions of that specific witness. And we'll repeat that process for all witnesses. At the end, the board will have discussion and then we will turn again to, to the public. Sorry, before the board discussion, we'll turn to the public and invite anybody to come in if they want to be sworn in, you know, testify. So if you don't have any specific questions but have a comment regarding this applicant, application, you can provide that commentary at that time. And then there will be a board discussion and followed by a vote. So that said, that is the, the plan for the evening and we'll do our best to stick to that format. So with that, I hand it over to you. Thank you for allowing me to introduce it.
Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. Again, it's John Wycheskala for the record. It's a pleasure to be before the board this evening from my kitchen. This is an application. My client is MSS Millburn Realty. This entity is the owner and operator of the Millburn Shopping Center. It's located at 720 to 778 Morris and Essex Turnpike. For the record, the property is identified as Block 1904, Lot 20, and it is located in your B2 Zone District. And that is a zone district that provides for a variety of commercial uses, including retail, retail service, office use, medical office use, and a variety of other uses. This applicant was last before the board, actually dating back to the 1994, 1995 era. That is when MSS received site plan approvals to expand the building to what you see out there today as its current configuration. I would note for the board and the board professionals, at the time this application was presented back in 1994, the standard that was applied relative to parking was your shopping center standard, which is a blended, blended standard that would pertain to retail and other uses that are otherwise permitted in the zone. And the site plan as it's currently configured matches up with that site plan that was approved back in, in 1995. We're here before you tonight seeking site plan approval and any other necessary relief because we do have a proposed change in use and tenancy within the center. And the reason we're here, even though the use is permitted, your ordinance provides that if there is a change in tenancy and that tenancy change involves a change of use and that use has a higher parking standard than the previous use, then a site plan approval is required. And I know you've seen these applications before. I presented them in the past before the board. The leasehold space we are talking about is approximately 3,128 square feet, and it is located on the first floor of the center. For those of you, you may recall, this leasehold space was actually occupied by Walter Baumman Jewelers. Walter Baumman vacated the space about two and a half years ago in February of 2018. And MSS has really been, you know, they were marketing this, this property for lease. They had a fair amount of interest based on its, on its location, availability of parking, things of that nature. But given the current retail market, it's taken a while. And that's what brings us here tonight. We have signed a lease with Trinity Rehab. It's a physical rehabilitation operator. They currently have approximately 20 or 21 facilities throughout the state of New Jersey. What was attractive to Trinity was its location and desire to be here in Milburn. And what's attractive to MSS, besides of course filling a prominent first floor leasehold space, is a use that we believe is complementary to, to the other uses within the center. As stated, the use is permitted in your B2 Zone District. But I would say again, a physical rehab facility does have a higher standalone parking standard. That's, again, that's why we're here. The retail Walter Baumman had a parking standard of one per 200, one space per 200 square feet. A use such as this, which I believe would be properly characterized as a medical office use, requires one space per 150. So the differential on that for the board's purposes, this space would require 16 or required 16 spaces as Walter Baumman. And as Trinity Rehab, it requires 21 spaces. So, you know, viewed on its own, it would be a five-space increase relative to, to demand, according to your ordinance. We are not proposing any changes to the building. So we're not expanding the building, modifying the building. All changes are just going to be an interior fit-up with respect to this leasehold space. The only differential would be if approved, Trinity would also get a space out on the freestanding shopping center pylon sign. So that's kind of the sum and substance of the application. I have two witnesses that I intend to call this evening. Our project architect, Jim DeBarbury. He has a long history on this site because he was the architect of record back in 1994, 95, when the, when, when the building in its current configuration was approved. And I also have Tanya Gavrilides with Trinity Rehab. And Tanya is going to provide an overview of the business operations, hours of operation, number of employees, and things of that nature. Also joined today by Tina Koch and Andrew LaFredo of MSS Millburn. Tina has been the company's assigned property manager to this site for the past four years at least, dating back to 2016. She's familiar with all aspects of the business, so the building operation, parking availability, things of that nature, current tendencies and the like. So that's kind of a thumbnail sketch of what we have. Unless anybody has any questions of me, I would like to call Mr. DeBarbury and have him sworn in. And I did see Mr. Steinberg raise a finger there, so.
Yes. I just have one question. You said that you're not seeking a parking variance.
So, well, we have not, yeah, so I would say this, you know, and of course, until receiving Mr., Mr. Phillips' review report, as I stated earlier, this project and this building was approved as a, with a parking standard for shopping center. Interestingly, you, you have a shopping center standard and I've been there and seen it applied with respect to, to the mall property and some of the other centers nearby. But actually, shopping centers are not a defined term. So it really depends on how the board views this. We have a permitted use within a shopping center approved in 1994, 95 using that standard. I believe it's appropriate to maintain that standard. But if there is a difference in view in that regard, then we would be requesting variance relief candidly. If I do a breakout of every individual tenancy which has, was not done previously and hasn't been done to date, I would be in a parking deficiency. We are going to have testimony tonight from our team that will of course speak to, to the availability of parking and the ample number of parking spaces. You know, when we filed the application, really, it was related to a change in tenancy, Mr. Steinberg of this 3,128 square feet. So we can go through it in, in any way in that regard. I figured we get in and hear, hear from our architect and hear from Trinity. And I think the board can hear as well from, from ownership and management. And then maybe we'll, we can circle back to that.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. That answers the question you had. Okay, so please go ahead and you can call your first witness.
All right. First witness I'd like to call is Mr. DeBarbury. Who I know is on, I see is muted and I don't see his face yet. But Jim, you have to unmute and hit your video.
I'll say.
Perfect.
Okay, so if you would just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from the testimony about to give tonight Zoom deposition? Zoom hearing to be the truth, the whole truth, none but the truth?
I do.
Just state your name, spell your name for the record. Just state your name, spelling your name for the record, please.
James DeBarbary. The last name is spelled D-E-B-A-R-B-I-E-R-I.
Thank you.
And Mr. DeBarbary, can you please provide the board with a overview of your education and professional background and licenses that you hold?
Sure. I am the Senior Principal of DeBarbary Architects in Rutherford, New Jersey. I received my Bachelor of Architecture degree from the University of Notre Dame. And I got my license in New Jersey in 1979. I have licenses in 10 other states, including the surrounding states of New York, Pennsylvania, Delaware, and Connecticut. And I'm a member of the American Institute of Architects and New Jersey Society of Architects. And I've appeared before many boards and boards of adjustment, and have provided testimony. I did appear before this board in 1995 for that, that site plan application. And I've appeared also before this board for several supermarket applications.
Thank you. So you're, you're being sworn in, or sworn in as an architect. Is that correct?
Yes.
Fantastic. And your New Jersey license is current and up to date?
Yes, it is.
Fantastic. Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, before, before we get into any further testimony, I made a note to myself that we need to address the waivers.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Bouzak. I forgot about that.
... purposes, and I wanted to wait until we, we had a live witness here. While Mr. Wichescola did a great job in providing information, he's not sworn in, and he's not a waiver. So I waited till we got someone to, to do that. So perhaps, Mr. Wichescola, if you can go through briefly the waivers that you requested, and I don't know if Mr. Barbieri would be the one who would comment, or if there's someone else, but I just would like to get those off the table.
Yep. No, that's a good point, Mr. Bouzak. So, so Mr. DeBarbieri, we have requested a waiver, and I'm just pulling back out my list again right now. But we do have a, a waiver from the requirement of the submittal of an environmental impact statement. The reason being that we are not doing any modifications relative to the center. We don't have any, you know, environmental conditions that are otherwise impacted as a result of this application. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And just going through, just going through the, the site plan submittal. And Mr. Bouzak, do you want me to just kind of go through them summarily and?
Yes. Why don't, why don't you do that? If you have the list in front of you, or if you don't, I have the list. But if you have it, why don't you just go through all of them at once, or at least the ones that are grouped together, and I'm sure you can ask a question.
I, yeah, I will do so. And, and Mr. DeBarbary, we also have, and I'm just referring to the, to the checklist submittal, we did have a number of waivers just regarding some of the technical submittals. That includes on the site plan, the zoning district and zone data. I think that actually was corrected and addressed. We also have contours, two-foot intervals, which is, you know, existing and proposed within 100 feet of the site, location and description of existing and proposed monuments, setback dimensions and dimensions of all improvements, a key map of the general area, and property owners within 200 feet. We have supplied that list. I think you've modified our plans to have signatures for the board chairman. And I think those, those amounts of the waivers, Mr. Bouzak, that I see, and Mr. DeBarbary, those are, those are waivers we had requested, if I am correct, because we are really just talking about a change of tenancy within the existing building, and we're not doing any other modifications to the site. Is that correct?
That's correct. There's no site work, no change to the buildings.
And Mr. Bouzak, I think I caught all of them?
Yes, I, I do not have, have any other ones. Can I just clarify that? Did you say that the, the monuments were, were, were provided or were not provided?
The monuments were not provided. Correct, Jim? That's right.
That's correct.
Contours were not provided, and the, well, the setback dimensions, I'm sorry, I just missed that. I know the other two were provided, the key map and the signature block for the chairman, secretary, and engineer.
Yeah, correct. So the setback dimensions were not provided on the architectural site plan, Mr. Bouzak. But we actually did supplement the submittal after getting the completeness review letter. And what we did is, we did include a 2013 ALTA survey, and I believe that actually shows the setbacks as well.
Okay, so that's, all right.
Yep.
So I guess the, the next step would be for someone on the board to move to grant the waivers that were just discussed, so that the application can go forward.
So moved.
Second. Daniel Bear.
Yes.
Diane Eggwell.
Yes.
Jorge Master Pietro.
Yes.
Mark Mattel.
Yes.
Sarah Prupis.
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg.
Yes.
David Mara.
Yes.
Miriam Salerno.
Yes.
Beth Sol.
Yes.
Thank you very much, everyone. So, may we proceed then?
Yes, thank you.
Good to go? Okay, thank you very much. So, Mr. DeBarbary, rather than me leading you through, this is an application regarding a change in tenancy. You prepared the, the, the site plan. It's really an architectural site plan for the shopping center. If you could please provide the board with an overview and a presentation. I know I gave a summary, but I'm not a sworn witness, and you can provide the board with an overview. And, and Eileen, is, is, is Mr. DeBarbary able to do a share screen, so he can put that plan up? Okay.
Good. Yeah, we'll give that a try. Let me know if it doesn't show up. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
And, and Jim, I'm, I'm actually looking at what you just put up, and, and looking at what we had submitted, and what it looks like here is exactly what we submitted, but I think you added green there, I would assume, which is a color that's not in what's, what's in the board packet. I'm sure that's just to identify the leasehold, but we probably, that, we, we probably ought to just mark that technically as an exhibit. Maybe we'll call it A1 with today's date.
We should do so. That is correct, Mr. Wichescola.
Okay, thank you. So, so Jim, if you could please just kind of explain what A1 is?
Yeah, the drawing is, it's my drawing number ST1, and it's the site, a site of the shopping center plus the parking. And you're correct, the, the green area is the location of the Trinity Rehab proposed location. It's 3,128 square feet. It's located in a recessed area of, of the site plan, of, of the building configuration. Just to give a quick overview of the prop, the property itself, the ground floor area is 51,414 square feet. Now, in that area, I've excluded the foyer and second level stairs. There is a second level on this shopping center in the area of the recess above the Trinity Rehab that extends all the way over to the right. Let's see, that would be the east side of Massage Envy. So if we add that foyer in there, the, the ground floor footprint is 51,886 square feet. The second floor that occurs over that recessed area of the stores is another 13,928 square feet. So, the total gross area of the ground and second floor is 65,814 square feet. Okay, and I'd like to next just show, for clarity, a photo of where the store is in the front elevation.
Why don't we mark that Exhibit A2, and Mr. DeBarbieri, you can testify as to that, put today's date on it.
Okay. Yes, there's a, the, the store will be located at the former Walter Baumann's. Now, as you look down that main parking aisle, it's right at the end of that. Zoom in on that. To the left of it is the gym source tenant space, and you can see here, to the right of the red awning is the area of, that Trinity Rehab will take. Another view of that. Just another view showing the rest of the center. Panera Bread, you can see at the building on the right. And you can see the second floor windows above the lower retail stores in the center area.
Let's mark this as Exhibit A3, please.
Is that the same thing, or that was just a zoom in, wasn't it, Jim?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought, I thought it was a different form.
Yeah, no, it looks like, no, it is. Oh, it is.
It's a different view, yeah.
Okay.
The, the next exhibit is the, is a floor plan of the Trinity space. Let's see if we can get that on. Okay, now, this plan was not done by me. This was done by the architect for Trinity Rehab. The floor plan is shown on the left.
And we'll mark this A5 again for the record, and if you.
And I, and I think this is actually the plan that is in before the board.
That's all right, John. We, irrespective of that, we still mark it for the record.
Perfect. Yep.
I missed one. I, I have A1 sheet ST. A2 is the, A2 and 3 are photos of the subject sites. Did I miss A4?
Yes, there should be A4. I
Oh, okay.
Had already written it down as A4, and I didn't realize that I did.
Okay, it's a very simple floor plan. The bottom of the sheet is facing the parking area, and that's the entrance into this rehab area. And there's a waiting area, a receptionist. And in the middle of the space is a large therapy area. That'll include the rehab equipment, and that's where the rehab treatment takes place. And at the rear of the store is a break room, a single office, and two toilets. It's a very simple floor plan. And, you know, we have a Trinity Rehab representative will be giving you more detail on the operation. And I just wanted to make a note that I, you know, this is, I'm the architect, but I'm going to make a personal note about the center, because I, I do know the center and the tenants in there. And many of them are personal service tenants, especially on the second floor. There's a lot, there's several wellness tenants, along with the spa. There's a Zoma Day Spa on the ground floor. I think this center would fit right in with the, the wellness theme of, of this shopping center. And I think you'll hear more about that from Trinity Rehab representative. John, that's all I have, unless there's a question.
Jim, if I may, just, just back on your site plan, and I'm, you can either refer back to it or not, but the site plan that you have prepared is consistent with what was approved by this board back in 1994, 95, and what was expected to be built at that time relative to the building, parking lots, circulation, and the like. Is that correct?
That, that's correct. The application was prepared by Casey Keller, who's a Melbourne engineer, and I did the site plan, the architectural site plan for it.
And there were some comments, and I know Mr. Doty had a comment in his report regarding some landscaping. I think there were some trees and so forth. The applicant will, will obviously agree, is that correct, to, to replace any of the dead trees or that were observed by Mr. Doty, and to work with him relative to species or anything like that? If the board were inclined to grant an approval, is that right?
Yes. And, yeah, I did go out there again yesterday, and the trees that have died are mainly in that front island, right in front of the, the stores. So, there's three there. There's also two along the east property line that have died. And just to remind the board, we did work with John Lenson on this, this planting plan way back when, to, to plant and shrub this site. And I even have the list of shrubbery here. It's not shown on this plan, but the, the landscaping plan. So we could replace it in kind. That was approved back in 1995, or we could work with Mr. Doty on what trees he would like.
Thank you. I have nothing further, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. I, let me see, I can see the board. So you can, Mr. Barbieri, please do leave the images up, just in case any of the questions, it's easier for you to do it.
And, and if I might, if I might just add, I do want to clarify, and Jim said it, we're going to hear a little bit more about that internal layout, just so the board is aware and the public, when I call Tanya, the, the Trinity Rehab personal, speak a little bit more about that interior, but just want everyone to be aware of that.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Does any member of the board have questions for this witness? Mr. Mattel?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, you know, according to Tom Doty's note, I'm just going back to the tree, there are five missing trees and one dying or dead tree, he said. And I, I agree that they should be replaced. So you're going to replace six trees, or?
Correct. Yes.
And if any of those are mature, what I'd prefer that you do is to use the International Society of Arboretum Culture Base Area Replacement, which is basically respected in the industry. You know, we just basically take the DBH and, and then basically multiply that by the circumference to get to determine how many inches are lost, and then replace those inches by one to, one and a half to two-inch trees. And Tom, basically, I think he's been at least trying to plant as many natives as he can. So that would be great, if he can replace those with native species. It would be terrific.
Yeah, I like it. I think as Mr. DeBarbary said, it sounds like we went through quite a landscape review originally, but we have no issue working with Mr. Doty on species. And if it's native species, it makes sense. By all means, I, I understand that.
Great, thanks so much.
Okay, any other questions for this witness? From the board? Okay, hearing none, then, if any members of the public have a question for Mr. Barbieri pertaining to his testimony, you can raise your hand using the Zoom function now, and can ask that question.
I can't see that, if his screen's being shared.
Okay, I just, if you hover over, okay, that's fine. Mr. Barbieri, can you unshare your screen? Thank you.
I don't see any hands raised.
Don't see any hands raised. So, thank you. So, Mr. Wichescola, if you would like to move on to your, I, I'll get it.
You've got it. You nailed it. Perfect. Thank you. John is, John is fine, too, believe me. All right. At this time, I would like to, to call Tanya Gavreleeds. And Tanya, I hope I pronounced your last name right. You are muted, and if you could click on, that'd be great.
Hi.
Okay, if you would just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give tonight, Zoom?
Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Your name for the record, spell your name, please.
Well, Tanya, T-O-N-Y-A, Gavrilides, G-A-V-R-I-E-L-I-D-E-S.
Thank you.
And Tanya, can you please just give, give the board a description of what you do, who you work for, and what your position is, if you would?
Yeah. So I work for Trinity Rehab. My title is Director of Operations. I handle many things for the company, HR. I do different aspects of the accounting. And I also manage our new location projects, which is why I'm here today. So Trinity Rehab, we've been open since 2001. We currently have 20 operating locations, soon to be 21 as of Monday. We are spread among 11 counties. And we are strictly outpatient physical therapy. So we handle orthopedic injuries, post-surgery, sports-related injuries, auto work accidents, back pain, neck pain. So strictly outpatient physical therapy.
Okay, thank you. So let's talk about this, this particular location. The leasehold area is 3,128 square feet. And why don't we just start with days of the week and general hours of operation? If you could provide a board, the board with an overview in that regard.
Sure. So we have what we call three long days and two short days, and majority of our locations run this way. On Monday, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, that's what we call our long days. And we have a morning shift and an afternoon evening shift. So our therapists will start seeing patients around 8:00 AM till about 1:00 o'clock. And then they break in the middle of, middle of the day for about an hour or two, catch up on documentation and paperwork. And then they'll start seeing patients again around 3:00 o'clock till about 8:00. On Tuesdays and Fridays is our short days, and they see patients from about 8:00 in the morning till 1:00 in the afternoon. Sundays, we are closed, but we will have Saturday hours on an as-needed basis.
And let's talk about number of employees. And I know, and why don't we, why don't we speak in the first instance if the board is inclined to grant approval? And, and you go into this leasehold space, what would your expectation be relative to employees that'll be working at this location?
Yep. Each location has a very few employees. So there's always a physical therapist, one receptionist. And then we have what we call our physical therapy techs, who are part-time, it's a part-time position. And they're usually our college students that are looking to get into PT as a career, may already be in PT programs and looking to gain hours and experience. So starting out for a new clinic, we always have one physical therapist who will see at full capacity about four to five patients at one time. Our goal, obviously, is to get to a two-therapist clinic, which majority of our locations are. And with the two-therapist clinic, we would probably see about seven to eight patients at one time, still maintain one receptionist, and have a couple of physical therapy techs.
So, so maximum number of employees, if it goes well, is five to seven employees is what you would expect?
Yes, yes.
At any, you know, at any given time or a maximum shift, and that's, it's down the road. And let's talk about your patients. Is this a walk-in, or is everything scheduled by appointment only?
No, no walk-ins. Everything is by appointment.
And do you typically have, I know you do have a waiting area, but can you speak to, to waiting? And I'm not just talking in the context of COVID, but what the, what the normal situation would be, you know, outside of that?
Really, our reception areas are actually not very big. We really never had patients wait. Everything is by appointment. With, especially now with, during COVID, nobody waits. We don't even really allow family members to wait. So, so there's, there's really no, no waiting going on.
Okay. And Jim earlier provided the Trinity floor plan, which largely just shows, you know, besides the reception area and the lavatories to the rear and the employee break area, it's really just kind of a large area, a large open area. Can you just provide the board with an overview of what happens in that space? What type of equipment and how does it work?
Yeah, it's actually very simple. So we have a reception area, closed-off reception area and waiting area. And then it's just one big open space that consists of our treatment beds and our exercise equipment. And the exercise equipment is very simple equipment, treadmills, bikes, arm bike, weights, that type of stuff.
So when you're, when you're, you said earlier, you got a therapist, and they may be working with four patients. You may have, you may have somebody on a treadmill, and they may, may be working, you know, with another patient on one of the other pieces of equipment. Is that, is that how it would work?
Yep, yep. And also, that's where our, you know, our physical therapy techs can help the therapists in certain, certain ways. So that's, that's what they're there for.
Great. And just, I, we submitted with our application a refuse and recycling-type statement. Just in terms of your, you know, waste disposal and the like, you do not generate any type of solid or medical waste? Is that right? There's no reason to have a licensed medical waste hauler? Is that accurate?
That's accurate, yes.
And your, you know, refuse would just be, you know, office trash, lunchroom trash, things of that nature, which would go into the, which would go into the compactor that is provided by the building. Is that correct?
Yes, yep, that's correct.
And just relative to deliveries, besides, you know, when you move in and take in the equipment delivery, beyond that, your deliveries typically will be FedEx, UPS, things of that nature. Is that right?
That is correct, yes.
And that includes your clinical-type materials, which are, you know, tapes and bandages and the, the types of things that will be used by your, your physical therapist and the techs as well. Is that right?
Yep, that's correct. Yes.
Thank you. I have nothing further.
Okay, thank you. I open it to the board if they have any questions for this witness.
I have a question. How many treatment beds? It looks like a large open area. How many? Am I've been to PT places? Just curious.
How many? I'm sorry, did you say?
Treatment beds.
Yeah. We usually do about seven in a clinic.
Okay, thank you.
I have two quick questions. One, I note on the, the plan, it mentions laundry. I'm sorry, I missed it if you testified about the laundry.
We, we do have laundry, yes.
Okay, and, and so that happens just during business hours?
Yes.
And?
And it's, it's very basic, pillowcases and towels.
Okay, great. And then on the, on the long days, the, the Monday, Wednesday, Thursday days, is it the same staff that is there essentially from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM? Or is there like a, a handover time, kind of?
Um, no, it's, it's usually always, it's, you know, the therapist, receptionist. The only change in staff might be our physical therapy techs, who are usually our students. So, you know, you might have one in the morning for the morning shift, and then somebody else for the afternoon shift.
Okay, thank you. Ed, I think you had your hand raised as well.
Yes, I did. In terms of the staffing, sorry, that, in terms of the patients, you said that the, you'd see, in the best cases, therapists would be seeing four or five, I think, or six patients if you had two therapists there. What's the average time that patients are there? And what's the, what's, I guess, the turnover of that? Do they, do they all come in at 9:00 o'clock? And he's dealing, he or she's dealing with six people, or five people, or three people? Or do they come in at staggered times? What's the, what's the movement of the personnel and the, the patients?
Yeah, it is staggered. So you typically, you know, we try to schedule every half hour to 45 minutes. And it would also, and two, with the scheduling, that's what our norm is. But, you know, it could, you know, you might have a patient that may be there for an hour, depending on the kind of treatment that they require.
So someone's there, if I might just follow up, if someone's there for, for an hour, half an hour into that session, someone else may come in as, as a patient and start, start their therapy. If that's an hour, the first patient after another half an hour will leave, someone else will come in. I'm, I'm just trying to get the, the mix. Are there always five or six people? That's a goal? Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Okay, thanks. Any, no further questions from the board members? I'm not seeing any. Okay, at this time, we can also go to the public. If any members from the public have any questions for Ms. Gavrilides, this is the time. I see no hands raised at the moment. Let's give it a second. Okay. Seeing none. So back to you, John.
All right, terrific. One last witness, and I just really have a couple of questions. I'd like to call Tina Koch, who is on. And Tina, if you can unmute and, and enter, that'd be great.
All right. Yes.
Okay, if you would just raise your right hand, please.
Yes.
Do you swear from testimony you're about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
State your name, spell your name for the record, please.
Tina Koch, K-O-C-H.
And Ms. Koch, can you please advise the board who your employer is and what you do?
I'm SS Realty, and I'm the property manager.
And you, you have been the property manager with respect to, to this location, as well as perhaps others dating back to 2016, is that correct?
Correct.
I made statements in my opening statement just regarding the suitability of this use on the site. And I made note of the fact that this is a site that does have ample parking, has not experienced any parking issues. Let me ask you, and, and, you know, we're obviously in a different time right now with COVID, but back in 2016, when you first started as property manager, this, this location actually had no vacancies, correct? All spaces were filled, including obviously Walter Baumann was there, is that right?
That's right.
And, you know, up until Walter Baumann vacated in 2018, that was the case. And I raise that, or I'm asking the question from your perspective, let me, let me step back for a minute. How often do you typically, over the course of that four-year period, how often are you at this shopping center?
Every couple weeks, and as needed.
Okay. So you have a pretty good feel for what's going on there in parking demand and general operations, is that right?
That's right.
And over the course of that time, going back to the period when, you know, that you had full, full tenancy, et cetera, have you ever observed any parking shortfall, any issues relative to circulation on the site and the like?
Never. I've never.
And presently, there still remains no, no issues relative to parking? There is, there's been ample parking, is that correct?
That's right.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, your company has been contacted by adjoining property owners in the past to ask if there would be a willingness to, to lease parking spaces because you typically have an available parking field. Is that right?
Yes, it is.
And obviously, the company has said, no, we haven't entered into any such arrangements with anybody. Okay, thank you very much. That's all I had.
Okay.
Thank you. I open it to the board for any questions for this witness. Mr. Bear?
Thank you. I just want to follow up a comment that Joe Steinberg made earlier. Based on our ordinance, there now exists a present shortfall based on the use, uses and square footage of parking on that site. You know, irrespective of the fact that, that testimony has, has been provided, that there's not a parking problem, there already is a shortfall. We've also testified that this use would generate more additional demand for parking above the previous use. Therefore, it would exacerbate this already exceedance of the parking capacity on the site. Again, I know that you've testified that you've not had a parking issue, okay?
Right.
So, so my question to counsel is, is that why aren't you seeking a variance? Because we have a situation throughout our town, through our, our commercial districts, where almost on every occasion, we have applicants who have two to three parking space shortfalls seeking variances, almost all the time, almost all the time. So therefore, there is, there is this precedent that we have. I just want to know, I want the planning board to note that there is a precedent that we have for applicants to seek these variances. So, so I'd just like to understand from counsel why it's our practice to do, to go in that direction. Why are you not seeking a variance tonight?
So, so Mr. Barrett, it's a very good question. And, and what I, I don't believe we necessarily have a shortfall. If you, this project, this building was approved, it's in the B2 zone, which allows for a variety of uses. And does, when it was approved in 94, 95, the standard that was applied to this building was your shopping center standard, which is the blended standard up to 25,000 square feet. You know, it's X number of spaces per square foot, and over that number is why, and I'm not citing it exactly. Our position is, and I could ask Mr. DeBarbieri to confirm this, we don't believe, if you apply the shopping standard, even with, with a medical use here and that increase in, in number of spaces, we don't believe there's a shortfall. When you look at it on its own, it's a change of use. Your ordinance requires a site plan for a change of use when that new use has a higher parking demand. So just looking at it on its own, we do have a use that standalone is one space per 100, one per 150 square feet. That's the reason why in coming into this, we didn't believe that a parking variance is required. Because we do think it has been treated historically as a, as a, as a, as a shopping center. That's the appropriate standard, and we do have the appropriate number of spaces to meet the square footage that exists out here today, which the board approved back in 1994, 95. If it is viewed differently, then obviously, we would be requesting the variance. We did include in our notice the standard catch-all to provide for that. But, but our belief was that the, the general shopping center standard, you know, was applicable. I can just think of, I, I guess, a, a similar scenario that I had with this board. I know within the last year or two was coming in with respect to the, to the mall property when we shifted, well, it wasn't Crate and Barrel, but maybe Saks, one of the levels on the Saks building, went to an office standard. We, we still applied the shopping center standard overall. We didn't get into the analysis of what individual, each individual leasehold.
Counsel, because our standards, I appreciate that, our standards unfortunately are our standards, okay? And so until we change, until, excuse me, until we change those, until we change those standards, they're our standards, okay?
Yep.
Good or not, good or not?
No, I have, no, I totally understand.
So all I'm pointing out is that, as I have no, I have no problem with the applications. As a matter of fact, I don't have to spend probably the next three months in PT, so I'm all for PT. But, but my, my, my issue is more of a general issue and practice of this board. And I wanted to point out to this board is that, that typically, we would ask an applicant for, to seek a variance on this type of condition. And I understand, I drive by it all the time. I know what your parking situation. I do not disagree with the testimony. What I'm saying is that, is that I'm always afraid of setting a bad precedent. And so I want the board to think about what this. and so I want the board to think about what this means in terms of all the applications that do seek, excuse me, that do seek variances for this type of change of use. That's all. So thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Yep.
Thank you.
And we certainly don't want to create any precedent on it. We just, we were hoping just to get to the finish line in whatever fashion is appropriate, Mr. Bear.
Thank you. Other questions? Or comments, I guess, at this point, we've, did I ask the public if they, I don't think I sought public questions for Ms. Koch? So if there are any questions from the public for this witness? Okay.
No hands and no questions.
Seeing any. Okay, thank you. Okay. So counsel, my counsel, Ed, I should say, our counsel as the board. I think we need to have a dialogue about how we're going to handle this, whether or not we're seeing this as a parking variance requirement, or per the testimony, going to hear it as such.
Yes, I think that is the first order of business. And let me just make some observations to assist the board in moving forward on that issue based upon the colloquy that Mr. Bear had with Mr. Wicheskala and the responses and so forth. There is some difficulty in meshing of the two ordinances. One relating to shopping centers and how parking is calculated, and then our separate but related site plan ordinance that requires a site plan application in the event that there's a change in tendency, which changes the parking generated by that space previously versus what's there. And when you have a shopping center approval, as Mr. Wicheskala has said, and it's based upon shopping center standards, in general, if you had not had your site plan ordinance that would generate a site plan requirement, you wouldn't be making those calculations. You have the general parking standard, and you wouldn't have, every time a tenant comes in, you wouldn't have an application before this board dealing with specified parking for that particular tenant. However, in this case, that's what we have, and I think that the analysis that has been made is necessary because it's the only way to fit the ordinances together and to fit this application into the ordinances. So I think Mr. Wicheskala has pointed out that doing the mathematical calculation, if you compare the prior retail use in this space to this use, using the two different standards, there's a shortfall of five parking spaces. And while the overall center has, I think it was 236 or 286 parking.
286, Mr. Buzak.
That comes out too, as our planner had calculated, one space per 230 square feet. So it's really at the low end, so to speak, because the medical use is the higher intensity use in terms of parking. So I think that the board should be looking at this application based upon the granting of a variance for those five spaces. I think while we don't have planning testimony directly from a planner, we do have, for lack of a better word, boots-on-the-ground kind of testimony from the property manager, who has indicated that there's never been a parking problem there, and our own observations as planning board members and citizens of the municipality who have observed that site over the years. But I think technically, we should be dealing with this as a variance. I think that this is a case where there was arguably an issue as to whether a variance was needed, as I think is clearly stated by Mr. Wicheskala. I think they didn't seek the variance because it is not necessarily clear from reading the ordinances. And the planner's report was really the first report that talked about it, but my recollection of the report was that they didn't even necessarily say you needed a variance. They wanted some more information on the parking. But didn't, I don't think specifically say there was a variance requirement. So I think the language that was in the notice was adequate to allow the board to consider granting a variance based upon the testimony that was here. With that, perhaps, if the board is in agreement with that, I would ask the board to ask Mr. Wicheskala whether or not he wants to provide any further testimony with regard to that. I'm not suggesting that what has already been provided is not sufficient, but now that, if the board does move in that direction to seek, to require that a variance be sought and obtained, I would like to give him the opportunity, if he wants to provide any further testimony or explanation on that. So let me pass it back to the chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I guess I'm looking for either nods or thumbs up, or I guess if anybody wants to speak in opposition to this idea, I would welcome that. Seanak, I see you have your hand raised.
I just had a question from Mr. Buzak. I'm not sure if I'm opposed to the idea or supportive of it yet. Does the amount of medical usage in the shopping center compared to the overall retail use matter in terms of which standard we apply? Meaning, you have, assuming there are no other medical uses in the center, you probably have a minuscule percentage of the property being used for medical purposes. Does that matter at all in terms of which parking standard is applied or not, or?
Well, I think it does to some extent. I think the standard for general retail is one space per 250 square feet. Our planner has calculated this out, and again, depending upon what you count in terms of space, the way our planner calculated it, you have one space for 230 feet, 230 square feet. So it's a little, the spaces provided are a little bit greater than what would have otherwise been required if everything were retail. But the standard for medical is significantly greater. So I don't think that that makes up the difference. So I do think it's relevant that you look at this particular use and the fact that it is generating a higher per square foot parking requirement than general retail. If, for example, the calculation turned out that the applicant was providing overall in the shopping center, one space per every 150 square feet, which meets the medical standard, you know, I don't think there's an issue here. But we don't, we're more on the retail side. So I think you do have to look at the individual use here.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Steinberg.
My view is that a variance is necessary. And I'm thinking that what might happen if a large space comes empty in the shopping center and a medical use goes in? Now we have a situation where if we say, well, we can just stick with the lower requirement of a shopping center, at some point, we get to the tipping point where there's insufficient parking here. If, in fact, retail continues, as we've seen it, to go down, and these medical uses are on the increase. So, and it seems to me from the testimony that there probably is more intense use of this space proposed than was true when the space was used for the jeweler. I don't, I, there's no way to prove that, of course, but I'm hearing the testimony as to how many people would be in this space at any given time. And remember, on the long, so-called long days, there's a changeover period, and it doesn't happen that at, you know, 11:01, there are X number of people in the space, and in 11:02, there's the same number. There's going to be a period of time when the people who are leaving are still going to be there, and the people who are coming have come a little bit early. So I don't know, if I were the attorney for the applicant here, I would say that to be safe, I think, and I think, you know, I'm a critic, as Mr. Buzak well knows, well knows, of this, you know, language that is used more and more by attorneys in the notices that say any, that they also see, the applicant may seek any variances that may arise during the course of the hearing. But in this case, I think that's appropriate. Because I think that a variance has arisen during the course of the of the hearing. So I, my, that's just my take on this. I don't know, Mr. Buzak, whether it makes sense or not for Mr. Wicheskala.
Okay, well, I think Ed's recommendation to our, one second, is that we're going to look to see if the board is going to make consensus on asking Mr. Wicheskala to, so we haven't decided if we are asking that. Mr. Wicheskala, did you want to comment on that?
You know what, I think, I have heard Mr. Buzak and Mr. Steinberg, and I do not agree relative to the variance issue. I would rather err to the side of caution on it anyway, relative to a variance. I do think between the testimony of our witnesses and the sufficiency of parking, that if this board were inclined to review this as a variance, I do believe we've demonstrated that this is variance relief that can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without impairing the intent and purpose of your zone plan and zoning ordinance. So we would request the variance in this regard. Maybe the only thing I disagree, I'm not sure that the college kids who are leaving in the morning and coming in in the afternoon will necessarily overlap there, but possibly. I can't say it won't ever happen. But besides that, I think, you know, we're in agreement, and to the extent necessary, I would say we would just amend the application to include the variance for that parking shortfall according to the ordinance.
All right. Thank you. Okay, so then we will proceed with having this as a parking variance request. I will say, you know, to Mr. Bear's point earlier, just for members of the planning board, I do agree, you know, there is, whether we call it a precedent setting or just best practices, you know, what, the way that we choose to enact, it's just like Mr. Tana was asking, what if somebody else, you know, what if somebody down the road comes in for this use? And that is what we, as the board, are doing our best to stay true to the, you know, the zoning that we have at play, and to do our best to ensure that we're following best practices. I think this is the appropriate course. Mr. Morrow, I see you raising your hand.
Yeah, I think that one of the, just to kind of echo what both Daniel and Joseph brought up, I think one of the things that we could ask the property owner to do with the variance request is to provide a parking ratio count by use for the shopping center, so we currently know what is there by use, by square footage, and how many spaces would be provided by each.
Yes, and that was number two, I believe, in the planner's letter, if you're reading it, if I'm interpreting what you're saying the same way.
You do have several uses, just to let you know, there's several uses in the center, Massage Envy, Panera.
The gym.
That, well, Massage Envy and Panera, which I know went to the board for approval, so I don't know what, if any, specific parking may have been required of them when they went in.
Harmon Drugs.
Harmon would be retail. Yeah, I mean, that's a straight-up medical concept, so we'd have to pull those resolutions.
Okay. But I think for our purposes of tonight, we are requesting that you seek the parking variance. I think we're in agreement upon that. And making sure I understand, your response was that you are willing to seek that and that the testimony as provided is your testimony?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. So hearing that, Ed.
Yeah, if I might, I think that Mr. Wicheskala has summarized the basis for the variance. I think in terms of the positive criteria, it's probably closer to a flexible C, C2 variance as opposed to a C1 variance. I think there are a number of different purposes of the land use law that would be advanced as a result of this, and when you weigh that against the, any detriment, I think you'd find that the scale falls on the side of advancing the goals with very little detriment. So I think there is, if I might comment, and I typically don't do this, but for the board's benefit, I think there is sufficient information in the record that if the board is comfortable with grant such a variance, they could do so. I think the conditions, if the board is going to move in a positive direction, in addition to our standard conditions, there are a couple. One is what we just talked about now, that the applicant would provide a list of businesses, occupants, and calculate the aggregate parking. Not for the purposes of changing the board's decision, but just to have a sort of a standard, a point in time, a snapshot now of what's there, and that may be of use to the board prospectively, as other things happen, as Mr. Steinberg has speculated, retail changing, and who knows what's going to happen to shopping centers like this in, you know, the next three or four years. There's one other condition which was related to our foresters' report, the replacement of dead or missing trees, that the applicant would work with the forester in terms of the species and types of trees and/or replacement landscaping that would have to be done. I don't think the applicant has mentioned this, but I know that the fire marshal has has had his standard requirements, and I would assume that there's no concern from the applicant about complying with those requirements.
No, there is not, Mr. Buzak.
And I think those were the only reports. I didn't see anything from the, from the police department, and our engineer had said that these were correctly interior kinds of retrofitting or refittings, and therefore, there's really no engineering issues as related to, you know, the site itself. So those would be the conditions if the board is inclined to grant the preliminary and final site plan approval, the variance for the five spaces, and those would be the conditions that I've just outlined. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody want to make a motion to move what counsel summarized?
I will make that motion as summarized by counsel.
You say on that?
Who was that?
That was Jorge.
Daniel Bear?
Yes.
Diane Aglo?
Yes.
Seeing those pictures that we just saw, I'm happy to see that it seems that everybody is following the rules this time. They are wearing their masks in their seat, which is a far cry from what we saw last week.
I, yeah, we're hearing something. It themselves.
Job for the Penn side is going to be.
Somebody's running into the debate.
The debate.
Okay. Well, a little levity for the evening.
Yes.
Jorge, yes. Mark Mattel?
Yes.
Karakrupis?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
David Morrow?
Yes.
Miriam Salerno?
Yes.
That's all.
Yes.
Hey, thank you very much, everybody. We really appreciate it. Great seeing you, and we'll see you next time.
Thank you, good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, Joe.
Good night, Joe, good seeing you.
So now we will move on to application 20007, 85 Woodland Road. And while they are coming in, I guess we want to bring in Mr. Inglesino again. I will mention, I will be holding us to the same timeframe as last time, which is approximately 10:30. You know, I do hope that we can much more effectively get to the end of the witness testimony to allow board questions as well as public questions. And before we begin, Mr. Buzak, do you want to explain so that all the members of the planning board present tonight understand the context that we are beginning from the beginning?
Yes, Madam Chairwoman, I will do that. We heard this application last month. You will recall that there were some objections raised regarding the notice that was provided. There were a number of different issues, including a question related to a variance that was pointed out in the planner's report and some other comments that were made challenging the notice. We had given, provided the applicant with, I had provided the applicant with my take on whether the notice was adequate, but pointed out that at the end of the day, it was not the board's risk, it was the applicant's risk in the event that the notice was deemed to be sufficient in some subsequent action that may be taken challenging it. The applicant decided to go forward, and we heard the testimony of Mr. Lonzo Fama. And I believe we completed his testimony at the last hearing and we're going to start tonight with questions from the board. Subsequent to that time, the applicant decided that they would renotice the application. They changed the notice to some extent to accommodate or at least react to certain criticisms that were made of it and provided timely published notice. I assume that they provided a certification or affidavit to Eileen. I have not seen the actual individual notices that were sent out, but I'm assuming that they were consistent with the published notice. And as a result of that, with the new notice now having been given, in order for that to be effective in terms of eliminating challenges to testimony and activities that the board undertook at the first hearing and that the applicant undertook, we effectively have to do this over again. And you will recall that I mentioned that in the event that we went through the entire hearing and the board acted, and there was a challenge, and there was a successful challenge on the notice, the board will have to hear the whole application again anyway. So we are doing that tonight. I believe that Mr. Inglesino's intention is to redo the testimony. We have exhibits marked. We certainly can, we don't have to remark all the exhibits. We can use the exhibits as they have been marked. There will be testimony on those exhibits. That's just a housekeeping issue. We'll use the same exhibit numbers. But other than that, we're really going to have to start all over again so that the record will reflect activities that start today forward. So everything else that we've heard, we essentially have to disregard, and that will have to be repeated tonight. I believe that's the way the applicant intends to go forward and the way he should go forward, given the revised notice in order to make that effective and effectively remove or mediate any deficiencies. And there's no suggestion that there were or were not deficiencies. The issue becomes moot, and we work on the notice as has been given now. So I think that's where we're going. So much of what you're going to hear tonight, I think you've already heard. But this is the testimony. These are one of the times that I can tell you, forget about everything you heard in September and listen up tonight. And this is what we're acting upon. I'll turn it back to you, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you. Yep, so just, just the quick recap is, you never heard anything before, and you're hearing it all for the first time tonight on this application.
You know, it took me probably five minutes to say.
I know, and given time. I will remind everybody, in case there are any different attendees, quickly, what we will be doing is, we will be hearing one at a time from this applicant's witnesses. Following each witness's testimony, the board will have the opportunity to ask questions, Q and A. And at that point, the members of the public will have opportunities to ask questions of that witness. We'll do that repeated for all witnesses. Following all witness testimony, the public will have opportunity to provide testimony, which may be witness agnostic, any testimony that you want to provide. If we get to that point this evening, will be, that will be the opportunity for witness testimony, public testimony.
Beth, before we proceed, I do see that Daniel Steinhegen is in the attendees. I know he was, appeared at the last meeting, and I just don't know if you want to bring him over. Does he need to stay his appearance at the matter? Or just, that's your call. What are you thinking?
Ed, you're muted.
Sorry, I was holding up my maps here. I don't, I don't, unless he has some comment to make with regard to the notice, there's no reason to bring him in.
Yeah, he hasn't raised his hand, hasn't, there's no question. So I don't see any.
Okay, then, then, oh, there's his hand. He summons him, okay.
All right, I will bring him over. He can.
Hello?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, good evening. Just for the record, Daniel Steinhegen from BD Padavano on behalf of the concerned residents of Milburn and Short Hills. I am listening. I don't have anything particular to add. I do want to remind the board that we made a couple of additional notice objections, which now have been reinforced by the Department of Community Affairs regarding Zoom meetings. My client's going to reserve its rights. I think you should proceed tonight if you want to. If not, that's okay too. But I don't have anything specific to add. But we did mark a letter. I request, even though we're starting over, that that letter be carried forward in the markings for the record, please.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Steinhegen.
Thank you, have a good night.
You as well. Okay, that said, Mr. Inglesino, would you like to begin?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board, John Inglesino from the law firm of Inglesino Webster, Witaschala and Taylor. We are here representing the applicant, 85 Woodland Road LLC. This is take two, as the chair has indicated. Just the reasons why we have elected to proceed are really not so much based on deficiency of notice per se, but we have set those reasons set forth, set forth in our letter of September 28th to the board, and I don't think there's any reason to dwell on those. The property in question here, lots 72, 73, 74, and 75 in block 1904 in the township of Milburn, approximately one, a little over one and a half acres. We are here tonight seeking preliminary and final site plan approval for this mixed unit development of 62 rental apartments, of which 12 will be set aside for low and moderate income households. So that would mean 50 market rate units and 12 affordable housing units. There is also a 10,000 square foot medical office component to the project, which will be initially leased and occupied by some medical group. The property is owned in the RMF-AH zone, which permits this project as a matter of right. As I indicated, there is an affordable housing component. Indeed, this project is the result of a settlement agreement reached between the applicant, township of Milburn, and this planning board dating back to September 17th of 2019. That settlement agreement, which was approved by the court, resolved issues relative to the township's obligation under the New Jersey State Constitution to provide a reasonable opportunity for its fair share of affordable housing to be constructed. This constitutional obligation, as I know the board is aware of it for the public benefit, is not imposed just on Milburn, but indeed extends to all developing municipalities in the state of New Jersey. This board is, of course, knowledgeable on the terms of the settlement agreement since it is a party. Indeed, your attorney, Mr. Buzak, who is a well-recognized and outstanding board and municipal attorney, was the township's lead negotiator. We had indicated, we moved to have the settlement agreement, first of all, put into the record as exhibit A1. Without objection, is that okay?
And is this the same exhibit?
Exhibit is last time, yes.
Thank you.
A1 would be the same exhibit. It would be the settlement agreement, Melhoro settlement agreement. So that is part of the record, is A1. I note that article, under Article III of the settlement agreement, under the definition of the word "development", there is an acknowledgement with respect to the conditions of the property and the settlement agreement provides. And I quote that the parties agree that the property is, quote, "suitable" and, quote, "developable" for the development, which is a defined term and is this project. As those terms are defined under co-a second round rules, and that citation is NJAC 5:93-1.3. Article 4, Section D of the settlement agreement provides that, in accordance with NJAC 5:93-10, "The township and the planning board shall not impose any development standards and/or requirements that are cost-generative." There are various obligations in the settlement agreement regarding affordable housing requirements of the applicant. The applicant will agree, as a condition of approval, to be bound by those requirements and all of the applicable regulations that pertain to affordable housing. The applicant has noticed for variances, variances and waivers, seeking design waivers and/or variances relief to the extent necessary with respect to rear building setback, upper story building setback, and minimum parking. And we also have the catch-all notice provision for other variances, et cetera. My only witness tonight is Mr. Lonzo Fama. So I would call him to be sworn. Mr. Lonzo Fama, of course, will be our civil, our civil engineer.
Please proceed, thank you.
Can you just raise your right hand? Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give tonight? Be truthful, truth, not but the truth?
I do. My name is Michael Lonzo Fama, L-A-N-Z-A-F-A-M-A. I'm a licensed professional engineer, land surveyor and planner, licensed in the state of New Jersey. I'm a principal with the firm of Casey and Keller Incorporated, 258 Main Street, Milburn, New Jersey. I've testified before this board on numerous applications and been accepted in all three capacities.
Your license as a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey is still valid?
Yes, it is, sir.
Madam Chairwoman, you accept Mr. Lonzo Fama as an expert in the area of civil engineering?
Yes, testifying only as an engineer, not other disciplines for this evening or for this application.
Possibly a land surveyor, possibly a land surveyor as well, inasmuch as we're talking about surveying the site and establishing existing conditions.
Okay. Thank you, yes.
So he is recognized in that capacity as well as a land surveyor and a civil engineer?
Yes.
Mr. Lonzo Fama, would you please provide the board with an overview of the engineering of the project, the current conditions, and the engineering aspects of the project?
Certainly. Can I take control of the screen and more in our, our presentation? Share, okay. What I've put up on the screen for the board's benefit, as well as the public, is an aerial imagery of the subject property. It was developed utilizing software provided to us by a company called Near Maps, which provides high-resolution imagery. This photograph, this aerial image, was taken sometime in June of 2019. And we had previously marked this as exhibit A2, and I assume that would still be the case. The property in question, as you can see from the exhibit, sits at the intersection of Chatham Road, which is on the right side of the aerial image, and Woodland Road, which is the central portion. The property itself sits on the south side of Chatham Road and the west side of Woodland Road. The property has approximately 268 feet of frontage along Chatham Road and approximately 362 feet of frontage along Woodland Road. The property is 1.54 acres in size and is designated as block 1904, tax lots 72, 73, 74, and 75. The property is within the newly created residential multifamily affordable housing zone, RMF-AH. The site, as you can see, has several existing structures on it. They're all commercial buildings. Summit Medical Group currently occupies a large building, which is about 10,000 square feet in the center of the site. In the corner was once a gas station, now abandoned. And there's several other commercial buildings on the property. There is a parking field located along the southern and westerly portions of the property, with access drives to, two driveways out to Chatham Road on the western end of the site and a single driveway access to Woodland Road on the southern end of the site. All basic utilities are available from Woodland and Chatham Road. That would include sanitary sewer facilities, water supply, electric, gas, all the necessary elements to permit the construction of the project that we are proposing yet. Just to review some of the surrounding area to get you a sense of the neighborhood character, directly across Chatham Road to the north are the rail lines. There is a landscape buffer, an existing wooded buffer, between the rail lines and Chatham Road. Further to the north are residential properties. To the east is another gas station, other commercial structures. Further to the east is the Short Hills train station. Immediately across Woodland Road, opposite the existing driveway, are garden apartments that currently exist in the area. Multifamily housing is in that area. To the south are single-family residential zones, lots on smaller lots. And to the south and west is the Hartshorn Arboretum. A tributary to Van Winkle's Brook runs along the southern portion of the site. This brook totally contains the 100-year storm within its banks. We have no issues with regard to flood hazard area impacts, wetland impacts. There are no steep slopes present on the site that would prohibit the development of the property. However, there is a section of the property at the western end, and again, at the southern end, that fall within what's referred to as the riparian buffer of the waterway. Under DEP regulations, a 50-foot riparian buffer is required among any, along any stream corridor that is regulated by the state. Development is permitted within areas of prior development, provided that there is a setback of a minimum of 25. a setback of a minimum of 25 feet to any structure or pavement. We have submitted an application to the DEP to allow us to redevelop within the areas of prior disturbance. That application is still pending. We hope to get that within the next month or so. The topography of the site, if I would, if you don't mind, I'd like to switch over to the existing conditions title and topographic survey that our office prepared under my signature. We had marked this as Exhibit A3, and what this is, is the survey of the property showing the existing structures. The little dotted lines that you see, kind of meandering through the site, represents the topographic condition, contour line, gives us a 3D image of the site in a two-dimensional format. And what you can see here is that the higher elevations of the site exist at the intersection of Woodland Road and Chatham Road, and then it drops along Woodland Road to the south. There's approximately a 20-foot grade differential overall through the site. However, the slopes actually lend themselves to the project as we are proposing it. This former site of the gas station has been appropriately abandoned. There was an LSRP brought in, and one of the issues that was raised was whether or not we had our RAO, which we did get, and we did submit that, let me find that, we did submit that to Ms. Callahan for, as in a supplement to the EIS that we had prepared. And we marked this during the last hearing as Exhibit A4. And basically, the Response Action Outcome, RAO, indicates, it's basically a letter from the LSRP indicating that the site has met the standards of the DEP and can be developed as we are proposing it. The proposal that we wish to develop necessitates that the project be developed in two phases. We have on the following sheet, which is Sheet 3 in your set of plans, and we marked it as A5 under the prior, at the prior hearing, was what we refer to as the Phase 1 Demolition Plan. And what the Phase 1 Demolition Plan shows is the fact that the existing medical office building will be retained and in operation while the first phase of the apartment building is to be constructed. The first phase of the parking of the, excuse me, of the apartment building also includes the mixed juice element, which is the 10,000-square-foot medical office area. And Summit Medical Group needs to remain in operation during construction. So once Phase 1 is completed, this building would then be demolished, it would relocate into the new space, and then Phase 2 would commence. During the construction of Phase 1, the building located what we're calling Phase 2 area will have parking for 36 spaces. This will, is approximately the number of spaces that are currently provided for to the building. It is less than the 50 spaces that have been desired within the ordinance for the medical use. And so we had indicated in this new notice that parking variance might be required. This is the situation in which perhaps this is a variance situation. In our mind, this building was operating with approximately that number of parking spaces, and that it would continue to operate during the construction of Phase 1 in that area. Moving on to Sheet 3.1, which is the Phase 2 Demolition Plan, is pretty much what I had just described to you. Once Phase 1 is completed, this building, which is the existing Summit Medical Group, would be demoed. The asphalt area is removed for the parking, and then the Phase 2 portion of the project would be constructed.
Is that A6, Mr. Lanza Fama?
Excuse me?
Is that A6?
That is A6. This was marked as Exhibit A6, and this is Sheet 3.1 within the plan set. The site plan itself, which we marked as A7, is Sheet Number 4. This gives you the overview of the development. The darker shaded area represents the medical office use, the main entry lobby, as well as some amenity space. To the west are the three stories of parking and the two stories of residential units above. This first phase would have a total of 35 units within it, and as I said, there would also have the three levels of parking. As part of that development, a mid-story amenity space would be created as required under the ordinance to provide for space for the residents of the building. The second phase of the operation would construct the remaining 27 residential units with an additional one story of parking, and a courtyard at street grade would be developed that is at an elevation that's accessible to the lower levels, the lobby, the area just below the lobby, and some other amenity space. So creates kind of, we often refer to as a pocket park within the development. And there was certain criteria that was required for this space within the ordinance under Section 606.4.1, under F, Required Courtyards and Plazas. Item Number 2 required that the courtyard plaza shall comprise at least 6,000 square feet. It shall have a minimum width measured parallel to Woodland Road of 60 feet and a minimum depth measured perpendicular to the building facade along Woodland Road of 80 feet. This space, as we measure between the two elements of the building and perpendicular to the facade along Woodland Road, is 61.3 feet wide and 99.2 feet deep at its shortest point. The area of the space is 6,541 square feet, thereby showing compliance with that section of the ordinance. The next section of the ordinance, Paragraph F3, indicates that the, that the public needs to be able to access that space. It needs to be connected directly to the sidewalk areas and allow for access into the facility. You can see from this, we can blow that up a little bit. You can see that there's direct access off of Woodland Road into the space. As the street grade rises, we have more like a grand staircase. It's over 10 feet wide. That drops down into the courtyard area as well. And this was an element that was desired in the development of the plan. I do have this plan rendered. This is, we had marked this as A8, which is a colorized version, and this might help a little bit the board as well as the public to better see and understand the different elements of the building.
Is this A8, Mr. Lanza Fama?
Excuse me?
Is it worth the A8?
This is, this was marked as Exhibit A8. It's a colorized version of Sheet Number 4, which is the site plan. And you can see in red, we've indicated Phase 1, Phase 2 demarcation. You can see the plaza elements that we just spoke about, as well as the upper level, and you can see the Phase 1 elements of the building. Access to the parking garage on the western side off of Chatham Road, there would be two garage entry points. The westernmost garage entry point would drop down to the lower levels. The easterly driveway along Chatham Road would come upward to the upper parking level. Coming around Chatham Road, there would be new sidewalk and walkways created along Chatham Road and Woodland Road, and the access point from Woodland Road, which would be part of the Phase 2, would be the only driveway access into that lower parking level as part of Phase 2. The parking for the facility, based upon the number of dwelling units, which is 62, and it's broken down into one, two, and three-bedroom units, there'll be 10 one-bedroom units, 49 two-bedroom units, and three three-bedroom units. Based upon the residential site improvement standards, the parking requirement for that breakdown of residential units would be 123 spaces. The medical office space requiring five spaces per 1,000 square feet, it's a 10,000-square-foot space, requiring 50 spaces for a total parking demand for the development of 173 cars. The parking areas provided within all of the garage spaces would total 192 spaces, which would clearly demonstrate compliance with the requirements of the ordinance. The existing impervious coverage on the site is nearly 62,000 square feet. The exact number is 61,911. What we would be doing is we're actually reducing the amount of impervious area down to a total of 56,612 square feet, or a reduction of 5,299 square feet. So that's reducing the impervious coverage from 92.5% down to 84.5%. So you're seeing a significant decrease in the impervious coverage on the site. Excuse me. As far as the bulk standards that are required under the ordinance, we have, in our opinion, we believe we meet those standards, which with regard to setback. And if you review the zoning chart in the upper right-hand corner of Sheet Number 4, you'll see that we are compliant. The minimum lot area requirement is 1.5 acres. We have 1.54 acres. The front setback off of Chatham Road actually has two criteria. The first is that the first 125 feet, as measured from the westernmost property line, the setback cannot be less than two feet. The closest point of setback on the building in that first 125 feet is 2.63 feet. The next requirement is the eastern portion of the development, the building itself, along Chatham Road, the minimum setback has to be seven feet, as you can see here, and our minimum setback is at 9.01 feet, as you can see here. The setbacks from Woodland Road at the first section, the permitted setback is eight feet, except for an area that may be encroached upon up to 50 feet in length, as measured parallel to Woodland Road from the southernmost property line. So that area would be the very rear portion of the building, along Woodland Road at the southern boundary line. That minimum setback has to be three feet, and we're at 4.35 feet. The remaining portion of the building has to be a minimum of eight feet, and at the very corner of Woodland Road, the entrance to the medical facility is at 8.08 feet. So we are fully compliant with regard to that. The other setback requirements were specific to lot numbers. Just to familiarize yourself, and this was, is a little difficult to understand and to see, but Tax Lot 76, which is to our west, actually has a finger. If you look at this line that's aligned with the short dash, the lot actually extends down through and parallel to our lots and terminates at this point. Further to the west, the Hartshorn Arboretum is actually Tax Lot 77, and to our south is Tax Lot 107. And you can see from the, from this exhibit that we are, we believe we are compliant with that standard. If you zoom in on that one corner of the building, you can see that to, the setback requirement to Lot 76 is one foot. At this particular location, we're at 6.21 feet. As you move up along the building, you can see we are at 5.97 and at two feet, and then finally, we're at 1.08 feet to Lot 76. Lot 77, which is the lot further to the south, were required to be a minimum of seven feet, and here we're at 12.03, 7.74, 9.58, and finally, 9.76. I believe in the planner's review memo, he may have misconstrued that setback as being that 6.21 should be seven feet, but that's not the requirement. The requirement is to the tax lot itself, which is actually separated by that small sliver of land. As to the setback to Lot 107, we have to be a minimum of five feet, and our closest location is at 5.55 feet. So you can see that the, with regard to the bulk setback standards, we believe that we are fully compliant. However, we did notice for that one setback variance, just in case there was some other interpretation to the ordinance, other than the one that we feel is what was the intent of the ordinance with regard to that separation between the various lots and the proposed multi-story building that we are proposing. Excuse me. Let's see. Moving on to, I'd like to review the, before I go to the landscaping plan, what I'd like to do is talk a little bit about the stormwater management plan that we had proposed, and subsequent to the last meeting, we submitted an amendment to that plan, which is not shown here. Let me find the right one. There we go. This plan would...
This will be A9?
We already had another exhibit marked as A9. Do we want to mark this as, I think we were as high as A11 before. We may want to mark this as A12?
Mark this as A12, a little out of order.
That's correct.
A12, Mr. Buzak?
Yes, let's mark it at A12.
Okay. What A12 is, is Sheet Number 7, entitled The Grading Drainage and Utility Plan, and Sheet Number 7 has a date of, a revision date of, I can't, I can't read it, I'm getting too old, September 24th, 2020. And what we did in response to some of the board members' concerns and desire, and it did make a lot of sense once we looked at the soils in the area, it turns out that this southern finger of the site... It turns out that this southern finger of the site is actually in what is referred to as an A-type soil. There's different A, B, C, and D-type soils, D being the least-- soil with the least ability to absorb water, A being the highest. And in this area, according to the source information we were able to gather, it had a permeability rate of about 5 and 1/2 inches per hour, which is fairly good. So what we did is we clustered in this area six 8-foot diameter by 8-foot-deep dry wells with an open bottom. The bottom area is 32 feet by 22 feet. And what we did is we directed the roof water into this chamber to allow the stormwater to be absorbed at even a greater rate than just the initial reduction in the reduction of the impervious areas. From the original condition for the 100-year storm, the site would generate 1.056 acre-feet of runoff. So if you converted that to cubic feet, that's 1.056, that's roughly 46,000 cubic feet of water would flow off this site under existing conditions. Under the redesigned condition, we were able to reduce that down to 35,000 cubic feet of runoff. So you have almost an 11,000 cubic feet of runoff reduction-- volume of runoff, which equates to about 82,000 gallons of water is being absorbed back into the ground than what it does currently at this site. So I think this is a win-win for both us and the municipality. I think it further reduces peak runoff rates from the existing condition. Under the standards, under the BMP standards, we're required to analyze the 2, 10, and 100-year storms, not only for the total site, but for each section of the site. And by that, I mean each discharge point. And we had a discharge point along Chatham Road, along Woodland Road, and the southern end of the site. And the impact to the Chatham Road and Woodland Road direct discharge points would be unchanged because these dry wells discharge towards the south side of the site. And this is the area that flows directly into the spillway where the open channel transitions into closed conduit pipes and runs further to the south. So in my opinion, I believe that we've made some strides in redeveloping the site, addressing some of the environmental issues with regard to stormwater management. I think this is going to be a good resolution to that issue. What I'd like to do is also move on for a minute and talk about the landscaping on the project. We had marked this as Exhibit A9 under the prior hearing. And what the landscape plan does is it not only develops vegetation in and around the site, it also develops certain hardscape elements, as I spoke to earlier, creating the courtyard space that is required by the ordinance. It creates a great amenity space, an area where people can gather, relax, have a cup of coffee, read a newspaper, and just relax. The streetscape is enhanced by street trees. We did get a review memo from Mr. Doty, and we're going to work with him on choosing the right species for the roadway so they don't cause issues with the sidewalk areas and that they thrive in and along the streetscape. You can see the areas to the south are existing wooded areas that would remain untouched, as well as the area to the southwest along the Tributary of Van Winkle Brook. You can see in the courtyard area, there are flowering shrubs. There's perennials that we're proposing, a variety of grasses. There'll be a large tree element and a raised planter at the central portion, a pergola that provides for entry into that more private space. This area would be closed off to the general public. This would be primarily an amenity space utilized by the residents. The front portion would be open to the public. And I believe the last time we talked about controlling that with a gate and a key fob of some sort that would keep those spaces separate and isolated from one another. The lighting plan that we are proposing for the site-- let me just switch over to the lighting plan.
What number is that?
The lighting plan is--
Lighting plan is marked A11 previously.
The lighting plan, which we marked as A11 the last time, is what we are proposing is a decorative light fixture along the streetscape. It's referred to as a Sternberg Seville. They are all LED-type fixtures. And the street lighting would be proposed along the sidewalk areas, at the staircases, at the entry points to the building. And then we're also proposing a Vega Ballard-type fixture. And these would be placed in the courtyard areas. Those are the A-type fixtures. And they all create a really good uniformity. In the main courtyard, we have a uniformity of 2 to 1 with a minimum lighting level of .5-foot candles and a maximum of 2.2. The upper courtyard, which is the area up through the area just to the south of the medical building, that will have a minimum of .5, a maximum of 4.2, giving us a uniformity ratio of 2.4 to 1. And then along the streetscape, along the Woodland Road and Chatham Road, we have a minimum of .4, a maximum of 1.4, for a 2.3 to 1 uniformity ratio. So these lighting levels are excellent for this type of development. I think the lighting will enhance the area and enhance the landscaping, as well as the structure itself. I'm just reviewing my notes, make sure. I think I've covered all of the elements from a site engineering perspective. We talked about the bulk standards that applied to the project. We talked about parking, the phasing of the development. We talked about stormwater management, lighting, and landscaping. We talked about the site's topography and how the grading is going to work. The part of the approval process is to secure a soil erosion and sediment control plan from the Hudson Essex Passaic Soil Conservation District. We have that application in process. We are also going to be required to secure a sanitary sewer extension permit for the development, as well as possibly a water main extension permit due to the number of units and the generation or the demand of water. The fire department did issue a memorandum that we reviewed with Chief Pizzano. One of the elements that Chief Pizzano had initially--
Let's find the file, make sure we're-- so this is the August 1, 2020 memo?
That's correct. Now--
Why don't we just go through these numbers here and address his comments?
Let me get to his report. There we go. Yeah, August 1st. Yeah, item one was dealing with the sprinkler system. We are going to use the upgraded NFPA 13 sprinkler system. So that's not an issue. Item number two, he and I had a conversation regarding that. He didn't realize that there was limited access behind the building. So he said he's not going to require that. I believe he didn't produce a new memo, but I believe he provided us with an email today that indicated that that was no longer going to be a requirement from his perspective. We have no problem complying with the other elements. Item number five deals with available flow. Obviously, before we can develop our mechanical and plumbing plans, our fire suppression system is going to require fire hydrant flow testing. That'll give us the volume of water that's available, as well as the available pressures, and that'll dictate the design. What he was referring to in this memo was that if there should be insufficient volume or pressure, that it may be necessary to upgrade a section of the system. We would work with New Jersey American Water on that aspect if it were needed to be done.
That's just with respect to our building, correct?
That's correct. That's correct. The only other item that he's still reviewing is item number six about the cabinets on every floor. We didn't feel we needed it because of the fire suppression system that we're proposing. So he was going to take that under consideration and has not yet responded. All of the other elements, 7 through 12, we have no problem with complying with.
Mr. Lanzafama, before you leave that aspect, and just for the purposes of the board as well, while I appreciate your representations as to what the chief said or didn't say, none of that, all of that is hearsay. And we will be looking for either a written memo or a written email from the chief to the board to confirm all of the items that you set forth. If we do not receive that, those will continue to be requirements that will be in any actions that the board takes. So I just want to make sure that you understand that and Mr. Lazzino understands that, and we get something with this. Because all of what you've said, while I don't doubt your credibility, is all hearsay.
I understand, and I convey that to the chief. And I believe late this afternoon, he may have sent an email to Ms. David indicating some of what we spoke about. But he does need to re-- in my opinion, he needs to reissue an amended memo at some point.
I think that's right, particularly with regard to number two. That, as I understand it, Mr. Lanzafama, what would the impact of that be on the project?
Yeah, well, you'd be impacting-- if you'd had to-- it's township-owned property. So if they wanted to pave an area behind the building to gain access to it, they'd have to lose a number of trees. And I don't think that's what anybody needs to do or wants to do. And when we talked about the location of the brook relative to the building, he started to say, you know, he started to realize, in my mind, was that you really don't want to set up a fire apparatus in that location. It's too confined.
Right, but number two is not something that the applicant could agree to because we couldn't accommodate that on our property, correct?
On our property, correct.
I think, Mr. Lanzafama, why don't we just go through Ms. Callahan's memorandum dated September 11, 2020, if we can?
Sure.
The first part was early observations and comments, correct?
Right.
And so why don't we address her points in Section 2, I guess, which would be technical review and recommendations?
Correct. We have no problem with complying with any of these elements. As a matter of fact, we've already complied with 2.1 by providing some additional detention on-site to further reduce peak flows, as well as ultimately the total-- excuse me, total storm volume from the site. We have no problem in doing the capacity analysis of the 18-inch storm sewer. We concur that we need the Treatment Works approval. And we understand that there'll be a fee associated with the sewer connection fees to connect up to the municipal system. 2.5, the response to that is what we have submitted as Exhibit A4, which is the RAL. 2.6, the patunist walkway behind the building is on township property and as such is available for use by the building residents, as well as the general public. Currently, there's a series of town-owned lights along the walkway. And I've been informed by the DPW that the source of the power for those light poles is actually from the existing medical building. When that's demolished, there will be no power for those lights. What we were proposing is that we would eliminate those lights and instead put some LED-type light fixtures on the building that would illuminate the walkway. And this way, it's clear as to who maintains the lights, who pays for the power. There's no confusion. So that would be our recommendation, that we do that. 2.7, as I stated, we have to secure Hudson Essex Passaic Soil Conservation District certification. We have that pending. And finally, the four lots would be merged into a single lot. We would do that through a deed of consolidation. And the tax assessor would have to assign us a new lot number based upon that merger, and we plan on doing that.
Mr. Lanzafama, going back to 2.4 for the moment, it references the sewer connection fee. I understand we have no objection to paying the sewer connection fee. But 2.4 references a specific amount of $1,800 per unit. That's market rate unit. Do you concur with that number?
Yes, that's their standard number. That's-- we have no say in that, John.
No, I understand. It's a computation. I just wanted to make sure you're okay.
It's 1,800 per unit, yeah. Let's see. We had Mr. Doty's memo. As I said, we're going to comply with his recommendations with regard to the root barriers, as well as the choice of species along both Chatham Road and Woodland Road. We have the planner's memo, which I believe-- well, we have the police department, which indicated that they had no objection to the application. It poses no concerns to the police department. And then finally, there's the planner's memo. I don't know if we want to go through this in great detail. I think I've pretty much, in my direct testimony, had addressed many of his comments. Because basically, what he does, he does a zoning compliance review, beginning on page 2, where he cites the section of the ordinance and indicates that we were compliant.
And Mr. Lanzafama, I think the way we handled this previously, I think we actually did a pause on this one because there's going to be some testimony from you and some testimony, I believe, from the architect. And so I think the plan was to address this.
And I think you wanted Paul present, too.
Correct.
When we responded. So I assume he's not here tonight.
He's not here tonight.
Okay, all right. So we'll table Paul's review memo for a later date.
Great, thank you.
So I, John, unless you have something else, I think I'm ready for questions.
I have no further questions of Mr. Lanzafama. Madam Chair, we turn it back to you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, before we do that, I just want to get one last item of housekeeping here. When I went through the exhibits from last time, I don't know, Mr. Lanzafama, if you referred to Exhibit 810, which I have down as Sheet 6.1.
Oh, I, I did not. I did not this evening. I did the last time. 6.1 was a, which we marked as Exhibit 810, is a colorized version of Sheet 6.1, which is a detail of the courtyard area. In the upper left-hand corner, you see a section through the courtyard. So you can get a perspective of the pergola and the fencing that we were proposing. There's details for the planters and the benches. And then there's a blow up of the landscaping elements that are proposed within the courtyard. So this is just an enhancement of what we saw on the overall landscape plan. And we had marked that it as Exhibit 810.
And Madam Chair, if I may, Mr. Lanzafama, just one question to clean something up. With respect to A5, which is the Phase One demo plan, you had indicated that we would have 36 spaces in Phase One, which is less than the 50 required. But I think your testimony was also that in the full build out, we would exceed the parking requirements. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So the relief that we need for parking in Phase One, isn't it true that that is, that is temporary relief while construction is occurring? Is that right? Not a permanent?
That's absolutely correct. And actually, the ordinance that was developed as part of the settlement agreement anticipated that that surface parking would exist for a temporary period. The ordinance talks about, in the ultimate build out scenario, there would be no surface parking. Everything would be contained within garages. So, and, you know, it's, it's questionable as to whether or not that's truly a variance or if it was just assumed that that parking field that currently supports the building would be adequate for the building during construction.
Well, that was my point. And Mr. Buzak, I would just suggest, subject to your thoughts, I don't think we feel that it is a variance, but we do believe that the temporary parking issue can and should be dealt with as part of the developer's agreement. And we would certainly be willing to do that. You know, if, just a practical way, and I think the correct way to address this issue. But obviously, you know, interested in your thoughts on that as well.
Well, let me just ask a question of Mr. Lanzafama, if he can answer it. Is it true that the parking for the other lots that have either buildings that may not be currently used, is it true that the parking is somewhat integrated? That while there are four separate lots there, that you can traverse one lot, you could traverse across technical lot lines? And that the parking is not necessarily clearly delineated or attributable to each building?
That is true. That is true.
So I guess my point is, and if I understood your testimony, it was that, well, when we demolish the other structures that were left with the medical building and the parking on effectively that lot or on the Phase Two area that will remain while Phase One is being developed, that that is equal to what's currently there? And that's sort of a?
It's equal to the number of parking spaces that occur up to that little bend in the parking area. And this seems to be the area that's utilized by the patients and the doctors within this building. But I understand your point as well.
Okay, all right. So I don't know how that should be handled. And perhaps we'll, we'll deal with that when the planner, when our planner is here to, to see how that is handled. Does any, do you know, Mr. Lanzafama, or you, do you have any knowledge of the parking situation there in terms of on the ground, the activity? You know, are cars, are all the spaces filled? Are, is there overflow onto the other lots? Are there vacant spaces there all the time? Just anecdotal knowledge that you, do you have any anecdotal knowledge?
Yeah, at this point, the buildings are vacant except for that building. So it's, it's hard to say what the, the actual demand. If you look at the aerial from 2019, you could see that the, the parking is pretty much clustered in and around the medical building. And you can see there's no vehicles parked in the more remote areas of the site. And this is from 2019. So I'm not sure if either one of these buildings were vacant in 2019 yet or not. But they're currently vacant. The last time I was there, there, there was a handful of cars. Because now with COVID, the patients are staggered to going to the medical building. So it's, it's really hard to do an assessment in this point in time.
Is there any ability to, to restrike the remaining area to produce the additional parking?
We are doing that to some degree. What we did was, in the, let's see, you see it here. What we did is we restriked the area and actually put in some curbing and relocated. The handicap parking was up in the western portion of the site. So we've relocated that and restriked that so that the medical building would have at least four handicap spaces to grant, to gain access to the building at the accurate entrance in the back. So we did do that to some degree. There, there could be a possibility we could squeeze in one or two more spaces. But another 14 spaces, I don't think are possible.
And the 36 that you were referring to are depicted on this exhibit as you've restriked things?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you. I think we should just defer that till we have the planner, our planner here to examine that in a little bit more detail. I understand the position.
Okay.
The only other question I did have, if I might, Madam Chairwoman, is Exhibit 812 was a revised Sheet Seven. Was that, was that submitted to the board before tonight?
Yes, it was submitted back in September, 10 days prior to the hearing.
And that just a sheet, Mr. Lanzafama, or?
We submitted this sheet, which is dated 9/24, Sheet Seven. And we submitted an amended stormwater management report. I believe we dropped off 12 copies.
Okay. Thank, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
I have no further questions. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Sure, thank you. I will turn to the board. I'm sure we all have lots of questions. I guess I'll ask if you can try to, when, when you each have your turn, try to ask maybe one question and, you know, you could certainly ask follow up to be sufficient. But I'd like as many people to have an opportunity to ask questions from this witness. So would anybody like the opportunity to go first?
I don't have a question, but can they just, I'll stop the screen sharing. Thank you.
There you go.
Okay. Okay, great. I see, Sean Ak, you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Lanzafama, if we could focus on the courtyard, the public courtyard that, that is provided along the Woodland Road frontage, could you specify the dimensions of the courtyard that are accessible to the public? Because I think you mentioned the dimensions of the entire courtyard, but I did not catch the depth especially. I assume the width is not different, but the depth of the courtyard that would be available for public access?
Okay, let me see if I can get that measurement here.
And can you confirm is the width 60 feet? That's what I had in my notes.
The width is 61.3 feet, that dimension I had. And I had the shortest dimension at 91. From the face, the front face of the, the building, the Phase One building to what would be the, the fenced area, if you will. That dimension is, that's not going to be the dimension, might have been not going to be the dimension. Give me a second here. Now what? Go to an old fashioned scale. Heck with the computers.
If I remember correctly, I heard something like 91 or?
It's 91 overall, but the courtyard area itself, let me switch back to.
And the reason I ask you this question is as per my reading of 606.4.1F, the area accessible by public should be minimum of 80 feet from the perpendicular building facade along Woodland Road.
Well, if we, we have the, that's 64. We have approximately 72 feet from, from the face of the building. You have an additional 12 feet from the right of way line that approaches that. So if you have 74, you're talking about 86 feet overall.
Well, that's, that's not what subsection three of F says. If I, if I'm, sorry, that's subsection two.
Section two, it says, it says dimensions. The courtyard plaza shall comprise the courtyard plaza. Doesn't say the public courtyard plaza.
Well, the courtyard plaza, I leave it to the lawyers, and I'm sorry to interrupt you. But it says the courtyard plaza, and the courtyard plaza referred to is the public courtyard plaza.
Yeah, it says, well, let's, let's look at that. Let's look at one. F1, location, in order to break down the mass and scale of the building and provide an attractive amenity for building residents as well as the general public, a courtyard or plaza is required along Woodland Road. The courtyard slash plaza shall be centrally located and shall be at the same grade as the lowest level of residential apartments immediately to the south along Woodland Road, which we are. You can see the accent, well, I don't have, not doing the screen sharing right now. But if you look at the, the site plan, you'll see there's an entry right from the first floor at elevation 197, which brings you into what we call the quiet courtyard. You then go under the pergola into what we call the street level courtyard. And then it says, the courtyard plaza shall comprise at least 6,000 square feet. It shall have a minimum width measured parallel to Woodland Road of 60 feet and a minimum depth measured perpendicular to the building facade along Woodland Road of 80 feet at all points. And the minimum distance we had was 99.2 feet. We, we interpreted that to be the, what we call the quiet courtyard as well as the public courtyard or street level courtyard. And Paul can correct me if I'm wrong.
So, but the question I'm asking you is, and I just want to make sure I heard the number right, the perpendicular distance of the publicly accessible courtyard from the facade along Woodland Road. So the depth of the courtyard is 74 feet?
It's, it's 74 feet to the pergola. Then there's an additional 12, excuse me, eight feet. So that's 74, right? Did I say 74? And so it's 82 feet from the facade of the building to what is the, what we have a fence line that divides the quiet courtyard from the public courtyard.
Got it. So the publicly accessible courtyard is 82 feet from the?
From the front facade of the building.
Thank you. That's what I was looking to confirm.
Okay.
I have other questions, Madam Chairwoman, but I'll, I'll stop for now.
Thank you. I would appreciate that. Yeah, if we can ask a few. Thank you. Jorge, did I see you had one before?
Question for us. It's already 10:15. And everybody's going to have a lot of questions. And we shouldn't rush to do anything. So how we are going to do it?
So, well, I don't, we're not going to, we're only hearing from one witness tonight.
I'm sure we have a lot of questions for just one person today.
I agree. Yeah, well, the intention was to pick up where we left off. But because of the renotice, we've, we've, we've had to restart the clock effectively. This, the intent is this will not happen again, that we will not be starting at square one again. So, so going forward, we?
One question now, and then I see Joy wants to do another question. The question is about the site plan. I see this took along Chatham, and I think also along Goodland, that has an encroachment along the right of way. I don't know if you want to, so are you, I don't know how the town is doing this. Do we have a franchise tax or something? Because they are encroaching into the public property.
The stair, a portion of the staircase does encroach into the right of way. Well, it was a desire in the developer's agreement, the settlement agreement, to create these staircases to give a sense of presence. Much like you see townhouses in more urban areas, they tried to develop the staircases to give the building some presence along the street.
I understand that. My point is, it's encroaching outside of the property line. That's my question.
Stair, staircase is correct.
The staircase.
Is there a licensing agreement that has to be secured from the municipality? I don't know. That you'd have to ask your township manager or township attorney to give you an opinion on that.
So Ed, do you know about that?
Yes, there would have to be some permission granted. And I guess my question, just to follow up, Jorge, is to Mr. Lanzafama, is that I, I didn't think the intention of that provision in the ordinance itself anticipated an encroachment. I think what it was intended was that the staircase would, would run on your property but would connect to the public sidewalks. There was not an intention of an encroachment. So I guess my question is, could, could that courtyard be designed to accommodate that? Or?
It, Ed, it's not the courtyard staircase.
No, it's not.
There's the staircase to the main lobby off of Woodland Road. And then there's a second staircase into the rear portion of the medical building.
Mr. Lanzafama, I would ask actually that you share your screen since you're referencing. I know we asked you not to. It will be easier for everybody.
No problem. I can do that again. Let's see. Can I do this again? Yes. Okay, here we go. Okay, here we go. What I'm, what I'm referring to was Exhibit 88, which is the colorized version of the site plan. Let me just zoom out a little bit and see if you can get a better perspective. So, one more time. There we go. There we go. So what Jorge had indicated was that he pointed out that the staircase into the rear portion of the medical building is actually encroaching in a Chatham Road right of way, as is the stairs coming into the main lobby off of Woodland Road. So that would have to be explored by the architect. If it was desired that the stairs be, be removed, it's possible that something could be done with the elevations of the lobby or the entry point into the building that would reduce the number of steps and thereby eliminate the encroachment. We also have to make the lobby area ADA accessible. We talked about that the last time. I forgot to mention that. That we're going to have to modify the plan to create some handicap ramping up, which can easily be done because of the grade change coming up along Woodland Road. So that can be explored. And we can certainly look at, A, the possibility of eliminating some of the stairs. So there's no encroachment. Or B, securing the necessary licenses or easements from the municipality to allow for the stairs to exist in the right of way. That's an excellent point. That's an excellent point. We didn't notice that.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for sharing the screen. You can, uh, share it back. I would like to ask a question, uh, myself regarding, um, you testified, um, to the parking demand. Uh, Mr. Lanza Fama, you can unshare the screen. It's fine. Thanks. Um, mentioning that the residential was going to generate 123 spaces.
That's correct.
I just wanted to follow up on that and ask where you developed that calculation from? If you did it from, um, the table that is on the, um, the building diagram? Or how you calculated the number of units and number of bedrooms?
Um, the number of units and bedroom count was taken from the architectural plans and the, um, number of parking spaces per unit is, um, outlined within the residential site improvement standards.
Right.
For a one bedroom unit, you need to have 1.8 cars. For a two bedroom unit, you need two cars. And for a three bedroom unit, you need 2.1 cars.
Right. And I don't know if, if you had discussed with the applicant, are you aware that the number of units as shown on the plan is different than the number of units shown on the table by bedroom?
We, oh, that's a possibility. Um, your architectural plans?
Yes.
Looking at?
And I know those are not part of the, um, what we're discussing tonight, but you are giving testimony regarding calculations.
According to the architect's drawings that I have dated May 30th, 2020, I have 10 one bedroom. I have 49 two bedroom and three three bedroom. Is that not the information you have?
That was the information provided. That does not match the drawings. So?
Oh, okay.
So I don't know.
I went off, I went off the architect's table. I didn't go?
Yeah. And so perhaps this is the question for the architect, um, but it is a concern, I think, that cascades because it feeds into your calculation too. Given that, um, I acknowledge that you described the need being 173 and the amount provided being in excess of that, it probably would cover it, but I would like to confirm that it does in fact.
Absolutely.
We will. Here, I just want to point out that the third floor has a different layout. It's not the typical floor. There are additional units in the third floor. So I'm not sure in Phase One. So I'm not sure if you're missing the count.
Uh, so just to clarify the, the statement I'm making. And again, I'm happy to revisit this at the point when the architect is, is speaking. Um, but I, uh, did it, you know, physically laid out the plans and counted and then was looking at the table and it wasn't matching in my brain. And then I actually confirmed with Paul, our planner, and had them do a count. So it wasn't just myself and we got different numbers. So?
We'll certainly sit down with the architect and correct that and adjust the, the unit count and ultimately the parking demand. But as I said, we have 192 spaces. I can't imagine that it's going to be impactful.
Okay, that's great, but, um, I would like that to be a revised, uh, requested revised calculation. Thank you. Okay. Um, Joe Steinberg?
I just have a fairly simple question. On the plan that I'm looking at, which is the site plan dated, well, it was, uh, there was an addition made on September 24.
Right.
The courtyard is stated, the courtyard off Woodland Road, it's stated to be street level roof courtyard. Why does it say roof?
Street level roof courtyard. It sits on top of the garage. It actually sits on top of the garage.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Additional questions from the board? Uh, Jorge, go ahead. Yep.
Jorge, you're?
Yeah. If nobody else has questions, I have many, many questions. So, um, as we know, there is next door a bird sanctuary, right? So what was the, how you are, do you have any study that the building is not going to make any complication for the birds there? We have glass window. We have lights on that side. How this is going to impact the environment for?
I, I have not done a, a study on how it would impact the wildlife that exists in the arboretum.
Can we request some study like that and asking the, our board? Because we, we are proud of our arboretum and our wildlife there. And I like that this new building will not impact that life. So how we can proceed with that? Can we ask for a report?
What type of report would you?
About the elevation of, because we don't also have elevation from that side. So I don't know how many windows we have, how much glass, reflection on the glass. So we don't have so much information and glass and windows can be very good for birds.
So I, I think that that's a probably a better question for the architect.
Okay, we can save the question for the architect.
Okay, that's fine. Um, thank you Jorge for the question. Um. Dan Bear, I see. Thank you for the, the big wave.
Yeah, I thought you'd missed it. Um. I just would like, I know you were heading into the end and I don't know if this is a question for John or for Mike or for your architect. So we can address it in the next session, but I'd like to have Michael be prepared to talk about the environmental impact statement. Um, so maybe, uh, just to let you know that, uh, that there are some, there are some, um, concerns I have. But like, I, I see we're approaching the end of the, the time. So if we could pick that up in the next session, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Um, Mark Mattel?
I had, I had a couple of questions about the dry well addition. Um, and I'm curious for the two and 10 year storm event, what, um, is your estimated percentage of onsite stormwater detention? And what percentage, based on the hydrograph that I, you know, I'm looking at, um, of the storm event would overflow through the 18 inch pipe in both of those scenarios into the creek?
Yeah, for, um, for the two year storm, um, to the south side discharge, um, we would have 3.14 cubic feet per second as the maximum discharge rate. Um, the volume of runoff would be, um, I'm looking at the wrong sheet, I think. Yep, sorry, I'm looking at the wrong sheet. Um, that was the old one. Um, what we have to the south side, uh, is 3.08 cubic feet per second. And the volume of discharge was reduced to, um, 0.254 acre feet, which is calculates out to be about 11,000 cubic feet of water would be discharged out for the two year storm. For the 10 year storm, that discharge would be reduced to 4.95 cubic feet per second. And the, um, volume of flow would be approximately 18,300 cubic feet. And for the 10, uh, for the 100 year storm, the peak discharge would be 8.66 CFS. And that volume of runoff would be 33,540 cubic feet.
Follow up?
Go ahead. Yes.
Yeah, I was just wondering, have you considered, um, sort of consistent with the 2018 master plan reexamination, permeable pavers and perhaps an additional rain garden on site?
There's, there's not, uh, there's not an opportunity for rain garden uh, because of the limited space along the streetscapes and our desire to get some plantings in. Um, the, the soils, um, for the majority of the site were, had very poor permeability rates. They were, they were more like one inch per hour, which is really at the limit where you'd want to put any kind of recharge area. It was just that one area on the southern end that we were lucky enough to have that A type soil. So we, we can certainly explore the possibility of trying to develop some other opportunities to reduce rainwater discharge from the site. Uh, but, you know, as you can see, we're somewhat limited.
It would be nice to try to retain as much as possible on the site though. And I think you can do it with some modifications.
Thank you. I'd like to ask one question, um, that I want Martha to respond to. Um, thank you, uh, Mike for showing the RAO. You know, you kind of flashed up and I believe you stated that you have submitted it to Martha, um, which, and, and the note says that it meets the standards of the DEP and can be proposed. That's what I wrote down. I just want to confirm because I didn't absorb that on the screen. Martha, did you receive it and are, and do you?
I did, yes. And they did, um, they did issue a response action outcome, the RAO, which indicates that the site is available for development. So it has been remediated to the proper standards and that was what I was concerned about. So?
Excellent. Okay. Thank you for confirming. Thank you for that. Okay, we are at 10:31. Um, so we're all turning into pumpkins. We again have the situation where we have not yet gotten to the public, uh, comment, uh, public questions for this, uh, witness. So, um, I believe we probably as a board have collectively some more questions for Mr. Lanza Fama. And then we are intending to hear public questions soon without having to go through this step of, of all the testimony again. Um, can we talk, Eileen, about when our next meeting will be? Oh, go ahead, Jorge.
Just a comment. Still, we don't have the traffic report. Well, at least I didn't receive the traffic report and I would like to see that for next meeting. Yeah, I think, I don't have it and I didn't see it online either.
Okay. And is the traffic report a document that has been submitted? And it is in town hall or is not yet been submitted?
I have nothing. I do not have it.
I, I don't believe it was submitted yet.
Okay. Um, is there a time and time need on your end to submit it?
Oh, we, we, um, I'll be in touch with, uh, Mr. Bouzak, I guess, in terms of what will be submitted. I think that, uh, Mr. Lanza Fama, um, can you address the safety at ingress and the, of ingress and egress to the site?
Certainly. We can, we can talk about the lines of sight in and out of the driveways. Um, we certainly looked at that with the architect.
We'll happen to do that now, right?
No, yeah.
So we, we'll certainly have Mr. Lanza Fama address the, uh, uh, safety of ingress and egress and, uh, we'll, we'll get back to you as to what, uh, we will be submitting with respect to traffic.
It's just to, to, to be clear on that, on the environmental, uh, report that you sent here, you mentioned that you are going to submit the traffic reports. So it's here and it mentioned that it was already submitted actually, but we don't have it. So it's here as a part of your submission.
Understood.
Okay. Thank you Jorge for that question. Okay. Um. Eileen, uh, when we would talk about when this will be, um, carried to, um, understanding that, um, council will, is not, uh, our council is not available on the November, October 21st, our next meeting date.
That's correct. I have three applications currently waiting to be scheduled in addition to this carryover. Um. Hmm. I think the two that were deemed complete today, Martha, if I'm not mistaken, were scheduled. No, one was, one was incomplete. One is, I believe, being scheduled for the first meeting of November. Um. So it would either be, we only have one meeting in November. So it would be November 4th or whatever the first meeting in December is.
Okay, understanding that, is it, is this, uh, Ed, maybe appropriate for us to schedule another meeting? That we can have this at in November?
I think it would be appropriate to, to schedule the next hearing on this so that, uh, we can just continue this hearing. There's, we know? And so forth.
We, we typically, um, in this year, it's, it's different. We typically don't schedule the second one in November because it conflicts with the league. But this year, the league is virtual, so we certainly could schedule it. When is the third Wednesday of November? I think that's the 18th. I think.
I think that sounds right. Yes. And so that's a full, over a week prior to the Thanksgiving holiday. So?
Yeah, I'm going to have a conflict on the 18th because I already scheduled something because we didn't have this meeting. So?
Yeah, well, the, I mean, I have to notice for a special meeting anyway, so?
Can you do the 11th?
That's Veterans Day.
Veterans Day.
We're closed. Well, no, we're closed on Monday. We're closed.
No, we're closed on Wednesday, the 11th.
We are closed. That's what I thought.
I thought we were going to do the 4th. No? Didn't you say the 4th?
We're looking for the second meeting.
So the 4th there is already an application on. And I think this, this meeting, this, this application deserves a big window of time so that we, the board and the public can have their due process, which we feel like we keep denying. So? And, and we do have a meeting on the 21st.
Wednesday?
Um, it does not have to be a Wednesday, I suppose. I know there are meetings on other evenings, um, that Eileen has. Um, I guess we could throw out some different evenings.
My Monday.
Sorry, say that again, Eileen?
Well, I do the board adjustment on Mondays, so?
Okay, so a Tuesday or a Thursday?
Wait.
Ed, you have the most conflicts? No?
I'm sorry, Tuesday are township committee meetings and I think Tara has environmental commission meetings some Thursdays.
Thursday is HPC, so we can't.
But not every week of the month.
Oh, you can't see me. Environmental Commission is on, um, Tuesdays.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
So that means Tuesdays are no good at all. Yeah. Well, Son, do you have the, do you have the town calendar, Eileen? With all the?
No. Um. Because you met last night, correct?
Mm-hmm. And we only have one meeting in November.
So there would be a Tuesday open. Would it be the 10th?
Um, no, that's the only township committee meeting, I think, the 10th, right, Tara?
Yes.
Yeah. So the 17th?
Could do the 17th. I'm available on the 17th.
How about people on the board?
Yep.
Yeah?
And Ed, you?
Works for me. I, I think it's important, however, um, that we know that Paul will be, will be at that meeting. Um, and, and I think when I spoke to him, I know that he's not available on the 21st of October as well. Uh, my recollection is that he did think he was available for the other, uh, scheduled meetings of the board. Uh, I don't want to speak for him because I, I wasn't really focusing on that, but, uh, I think he was, uh, available for the other scheduled meetings. I don't know about the, you know, other days because he's obviously got a busy schedule as well.
Okay. Can we tentatively set it for Tuesday, November 17th? And looking to our planner to see if he's available to?
Well, Madam Chair, for us, it?
It does not.
It, well, tentative is a problem for us because, um, we, we would need a, a date certain. Um, because we don't want to frankly have to renotice if?
Right. Can we confirm it tomorrow?
Well, I think what we can do is we, we would have?
Set the date today. You can set it.
Yeah, we would have to set a meeting today. Uh, and it should be at, at the earliest date that we're talking about. And if in fact, uh, it turns out that Paul can't make it, assuming all people here can make it, uh, we would have to put that on the agenda that night and just announce at that meeting that it will be further carried to another night. Um, or else, as Mr. Woodson said, they're going to have to renotice, which, uh, I mean, not that it's a big deal, but there's no reason to do that.
Right, right.
Would you, uh, would you? Would you want to go to a, here's the situation, I don't have any, I don't have any applications. But we weren't able to schedule the two that I have for the October 21st meeting because there wasn't enough time for them to notice. And that agenda currently has no applications on it. But since you can't meet, do you want to do October, can we do October 28th, the following Wednesday? But then, well, then we're meeting two weeks in a row.
Why did we, what was wrong with November 4th?
We haven't, we have a meeting with an application already. Yeah.
Sorry, I'm looking.
No, no, it's okay. I think we can meet two weeks in a row.
Yeah, I don't think that's a problem. I mean, if we, if, I'll notice for a special meeting for the October 28th?
Can we see, just check if that works for everybody, at least, Mr. Inglisino, your side, and.
I will be able to make it, Mr. Lanzafama?
Yes, October 28th is okay for me.
Okay.
Mr. Bouzak?
Fortunately, we meet two weeks in a row, but, you know, this would then have the whole night to itself.
That's, that's fine for me. Again, I can't speak for, for our planner.
Okay. Then I think let's, let's do that because then that doesn't push us even further beyond that.
You can't believe if the planner can't make it, there's a lot of questions that folks have that Mr. Lanzafama and respectfully, we certainly appreciate the opportunity to progress this application forward.
Great. Understood. Appreciate it. Okay. So that said, so, Eileen, just to make sure, you, how does this get put into the public realm from here?
You have to announce it tonight.
That, that this meeting will be, this application, 20007, will be carried to a special meeting intended to be October 28th at 7:30, 7:30 PM.
Yeah, not, not intended, Madam Chair, I think, I think Mr. Bouzak can certainly weigh in. I think there would have to be a motion to hold a special meeting concerning this application on October 28th at 7:30 PM. And if it's the same Zoom link, I think there should be an announcement with respect to that as well.
Yeah, it won't be the same Zoom link. Every Zoom link is different. So, because I have to set the meeting up.
Will the Zoom link be made available on the Melbourne Township Planning Board website?
Will be the same link as this meeting was. But I agree, we do have to actually make the special meeting.
That's correct. This, this will be a special meeting. This is not on our annual agenda, our annual scheduled meeting. So it will be handled as a, as a separate special meeting with adequate notice being provided in accordance with statutory requirements. But for the purpose of the announcement tonight, I think you've mentioned everything, Madam Chairwoman. It'll be at 7:30. It'll be a Zoom mechanism. There'll be adequate notice under the Open Public Meetings Act provided, which will include the Zoom link. And that will also be placed on the website with the Zoom link in accordance with statutory requirements. There will be further individual notice given to property owners within 200 feet. Nor will there be any published notice by the applicant.
Thank you. I make that motion.
We have a second.
I'll second. Okay.
And do we do roll call or all in favor?
We can do a voice vote.
All in favor? Thumbs up. Bye. Yes. Okay. Thank you all.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, members of the board. We'll see you on the 28th.
You got, take care.
Thank you.
Night, everybody.
Would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting? Mark made it and Joseph seconded. Thank you.
We have to vote on it.
Yes.
Oh, I'm in all in favor.
You can only vote once.
But it's a big one. All right. Thank you all.
Good night, everybody.